Hi, good morning and welcome to the December 18th, 2019 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. As this is our last Commission meeting of 2019, I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays. And we have a few announcements before the meeting gets started this morning. Firstly, on Friday, December 20th, County Treasurer Linda Kazire has asked me to remind everyone that first half property taxes are due. If you have any questions related to paying your taxes, call the Treasurer's office at And then as we move into the holiday season, we want to remind you about our Christmas Tree recycling program. And so Scott with Environmental Resources is here to talk about it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Scott Bowen with Environmental Resources. For the last 18 years, Sedgwick County has provided the opportunity for our citizens to dispose of and recycle their Christmas trees after the holiday season. And this year will be no different. This year's dates will be December 20th and will run through January 23rd with 22 different locations within Sedgwick County and the Wichita area. The best way to find these locations is to probably just get onto our website at sedgwickcounty.org. Now, when the trees are dropped off, they will eventually be converted into mulch. So there'll be a mulch pile there and we encourage the citizens to take home some of this mulch if they would like to use it around their own properties. The only request that we have is when they dispose of their trees, please take off the ornaments, the lights, the tinsels. Obviously, it's not good for the shredder for these items to go through, but more importantly, we don't want the plastics and the metals mixed in with the mulch. So once again, the dates will be December 20th, run through January 23rd. There's 22 locations that can be found on our website at sedgwickcounty.org, or they can call our office at 660-7200. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate the information.
All right. And after you recycle your Christmas trees, we'll get ready for New Year's. And so our staff at 911 will also be garing up for the holiday. And I've invited Alora Forshee from 911 to talk about that. If I could pull up the graphic. There we go.
Morning, Laura.
Morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Laura Forshee, I'm your Director of 911 Emergency Communications. We have two times a year, on the Fourth of July and on New Year's Eve, where we activate our non-emergency line. We do this because we anticipate high call volume during this period. And so this year, we know that there will be a lot of frivolity and celebration on New Year's Eve, and so we anticipate high call volume during that time. We will activate our non-emergency line and that number is 316-290-1011. Again, that is 316-290-1011. It'll be activated from 9:00 PM on December 31st through 1:00 AM on January 1st. By 1:00 AM, everybody better be in bed and all the partying better stop. But we anticipate that people are going to be out shooting off fireworks and having parties, all that good stuff. And with that comes complaints of loud noise and nuisance, things like that. So we would ask our community to really preserve that 911 line for those true emergencies, for fires, disturbances, things like that, that are more of an imminent danger to our community, and to use that 290-1011 number for those types of nuisance complaints. They will be staffed by 911 call takers and they will be ready to answer those lines. They will still get responses put in for emergency personnel, so they still will be handled. They just will be prioritized differently to make sure that the more imminent danger is addressed more quickly. So we ask everybody to be mindful of that on New Year's Eve and to be safe in their celebrations. Any questions?
I don't see any questions. But Laura, thank you for coming and bringing that information to us. We want people to celebrate. We want them to do it in a safe manner. One of the things you didn't mention is that there are people that like to fire off weapons on New Year's Eve, and they have to remember that whatever goes up also comes down and it can harm or even kill other innocent people. So please do not fire your weapons on New Year's Eve.
Yes, and any reports of that need to go through 911, not the non-emergency line, of course. Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
All right. And moving along to our agenda, we have a review of meeting minutes. A zone change request is coming back for your consideration. You'll review a CIP amendment to install solar panels at county facilities. You'll discuss the 2020 legislative platform. There are two items relating to staffing tables, one for human resources and the other for EMS. And then finally, there's a report of the Board of Bids and Contracts. There will be a brief fire meeting after this, and Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you.
Well, thank you, Kate. I appreciate it. I want to welcome everyone that's in the audience today, those that are joining us online and on KPTS. This is our last meeting of 2019. But we want to make sure on behalf of Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners that we wish each and every one of our citizens a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. We hope that it's safe. We just talked about it a little bit with 911. We want to make sure that 2020 starts out with all of our citizens being here with us. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, December 18th, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
In vacation, to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. I have a number of folks signed up to speak on public agenda. I think several of them are signed up for different issues that will come up on our agenda today. So I'll give them an opportunity at this time to choose to speak now or to speak when that item comes up on the agenda. So I would imagine all those that are here for the zoning case will want to speak during the zoning case. Is there anyone here that's for the zoning case that would like to speak now, though, that may have to go? I don't see anyone. Let's see. Beyond that, George, Mr. Theo Harris. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
George Theo Harris, 2115 South Chautauqua. I want to first apologize for the hat. I'm having a bad hair day, but they are ranked number one, so I'm going to stand with that. And then I actually get a three-for-one today. I do have my taxes on my house. Get to come talk to you guys, and then I'll be talking with the district attorney about the item here I'm going to be speaking about. All right. County Commissioners, I come to you today with an ask. I've been to the city of Wichita, and they, for whatever reason, aren't concerned enough to get the word out to owners with biting and attacking dogs. Dog bites and attacks are going up in our neighborhoods. Last fiscal year, October 1st, 2018 to September 30th, 2019, the post office had only five dog bites, a new record low. For just a few short years ago, we were 10th in the country with 27. Already this year, from October 1st to present, they've had seven, and we need to get postcards or notifications on the TV, in the newspaper, and/or radio to reverse this trend. This is a public safety item, and I hope it would pass 5 to 0. But maybe we need to put it on the consent agenda, since after all, who would be opposed to keeping Sedgwick County citizens safe from potential dog bites and attacks? The postmaster, Ryan Knopick, doesn't like this increase and has been in contact with myself, and he wants to partner again with another message to all 191,000 customers he serves, which includes Oklon and other parts of Sedgwick County. In March of 2018, the larger, more than twice the size of a postcard, was delivered. He wants to partner with the city, who isn't listening or paying attention, or the county to make this happen. So will the county step up and help so we can educate citizens and explain to them the need to keep their dogs under control and behaving properly? My mail carrier was bitten six weeks ago. He will live with a scar on his calf going forward, and he sports a nice pair of shorts in the summer, and now that is forever gone. I've been made aware of another of the seven who recently had their lip nearly torn off, postal carrier that nearly had their lip torn off. Fines and penalties need to be used as a deterrent to those who want to own and harbor these attacking dogs. Notice, I didn't mention the word pit bull, as any dog can be a biter. Problem is prosecutors and judges are excusing shallow fines. The teeth are in the laws, just not the follow-throughs. And that's why I'll be seeing the district attorney to make sure that they start, make sure those fines are adhered to, so people will quit having those bad dogs doing those bad things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Theo Harris. Have you provided that Susan Earle mine? Your request?
They haven't had a dangerous dog in five years in the county, so that doesn't even make sense.
Very good. Well, thank you. The rest of the folks that are signed up look like they're on solar panels, so I would imagine they would want to speak during this. If there's anyone here for solar panels that would like to speak now, I will give you an opportunity. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I am Kent Rowe with the Sustainability Research Council, Wichita State University, but also speaking on behalf of Sierra Club, Citizens Climate Lobby, Climate and Energy Action, and so forth. We do endorse the placement of solar panels and solarization of city facilities. Just yesterday, the city of Lawrence voted to have 100% renewable energy in 10 years, which is a pretty ambitious undertaking. But the first of the year, 2020, California, no new home construction can take place without rooftop solar. So it is time that we got on the thought processes, the training, and so forth for installation of solar panels. Solar will address many of the problems economically and budget-wise that we face in this state. Just last night, we met with the governor, who came in to talk about some of the maladies that we have in this state. We could not only save, but we can also generate income from solar in this state. Kansas is number five in the entire United States for production of wind and solar, but we're number 47 with incentives. And we have also a bipartisan bill coming up in Topeka, Senate Bill 69, which states that we will include a study to benefit access to advanced energy solutions, including microgrids, electric vehicles, charging station, customer generation, battery storage, and transactive energy. Now, what is transactive energy? We just had dedication of four new electric buses for Wichita Transit. This is transactive energy because most people were focusing on the buses themselves. Some of us turn to the chargers. And when you're down there, do look at those chargers for those buses. There is something called V2G. That's Vehicle 2 Grid. In other words, that vehicle will charge at low-rate times, discharge from its battery onto the grid at high-rate times, load demand, peak load demand. That also keeps coal plants running. We want to shut those down. It's costing Kansas $232 million per year, the ratepayers, for keeping the coal plants down. So we do endorse this. Please use Wichita State University and our expertise. We just had the 51st North American Power Symposium there. We have a lot of expertise, a lot of people. We have a new president who is well on board for this. Thank you for this initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. I have one other person that signed up to speak on solar panels. You want to speak now or later?
Always.
Everyone else that signed up will speak during later time. Is there anyone that didn't have an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak at this time? See no one? Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of December 4th, 2019.
Thank you. Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from December 4th, moved to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Howell was absent, but he has had an opportunity to review them.
Well, since that was raised, I'll just let you know, I did watch the meeting on the video, and I did read the minutes, and so I'm willing to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business. Item B, county zone change from SF20, single-family residential, to OW, office warehouse, to permit a landscaping business generally one-half mile west of South 159th Street East and on the south side of East Pawnee.
Thank you. Dale, before you begin, first of all, I want to state that I have had ex parte contact. I believe that all members of the county commission have had ex parte contact on this item, and that we are still making an informed decision on this. Also, when we get to the point where I open it up for public comment, I want to make sure that everyone understands the rules on public comment. We will be providing three minutes for each individual to speak, and at the end of two and a half minutes, our clerk will have a sign that says you have 30 seconds left. Her alarm goes off, that's the end of your three minutes. You will not have an opportunity to continue after that three minutes. I want to make sure everyone understands that upfront. Please don't state the same thing that other folks have stated. We've heard it once, we will understand it after hearing an issue one time. The way that I will run it is that I'll do it exactly the way I did when I was on the MAPC. I will ask the applicant or agent to speak first. They will have three minutes. From there, I will open it up to the folks that have signed up today. At the end of that, we will give the applicant or agent three minutes rebuttal time because they have spoken first. So I hope everyone is clear on the way that I'm going to run this. I run a very professional meeting, so no clapping, no booing. We want to make sure that we run this as professional as I always run a meeting. So with that, everyone understands the rules? Mr. Miller, would you please brief the case?
Dale Miller, Planning Staff. Commissioners, I'll try and review this very briefly, since you did hear it before. One of the things that I did want to go over, just in case there was confusion, is the Planning Commission heard this the second time, recommended approval 11 to 3. The recommendation includes a protective overlay that has 17 specific development standards. That was expanded quite a bit from the original protective overlay. Some of them were aimed at addressing concerns expressed by the neighbors. Staff did meet with three or four of the neighbors and their attorneys, and we specifically crafted a couple of development standards to try and address concerns that were expressed during that meeting, and they were included in the Planning Commission recommendation. But a protective overlay works very much like a restricted covenant that you might have when you buy a house in a subdivision, and it is an arrangement, an arrangement between the seller and the buyer, that when you buy the property, you agree to those restricted covenants. For example, I don't know that people still do that, but in the old days, it used to be some of them that you had to have a shake shingles instead of asphalt. The homeowners association may be able to review your paint color, that you can't just go paint your house any color you want, has to go through the committee and be reviewed. I've heard things where you can't leave your car parked out on a driveway in front of the garage door. It's supposed to be parked inside the garage for a certain amount of time. Well, the protective overlay functions much the same way as a restrictive covenant does in a subdivision, in that even though the property is zoned something, the only uses that are allowed are those that are enumerated in the protective overlay and subject to the development standards contained in the protective overlay. So in this case, the protective overlay limits the uses on this site, that if this is ultimately approved, the only OW use, the only office warehouse use that would be allowed, is a landscape and landscape maintenance business, plus all the existing uses that are allowed by right in its existing zoning of SF20, single-family. In 1996, for those of you that may have been involved back then, the city and the county had two separate zoning codes. Protective overlays were not in either of the codes. And so when the unified zoning code that we're operating under now was adopted, it specifically includes a provision for staff to use protective overlays as a way to try and address concerns that might come from neighbors in order to address those concerns, but still allow the applicant to achieve the use that they're after. And so that's how we have used protective overlays since 1996, and that's what's happening here. So I'll repeat that the only uses that would be allowed in this, on this property, if it's approved as recommended by the Planning Commission, are the landscape and landscape maintenance business and the existing uses that are allowed by right in SF20. Two or three of the other uses that are required is that the applicant is required to submit a final site plan that would be consistent with all the standards that are applicable in terms of parking, screening, paving of the parking lots, location of buildings, setbacks, and all those kinds of things that are typically reviewed in the site plan. It's not unusual for staff to not have a final site plan at this stage, because it costs the applicant money to change a site plan every time it changes. And so it has been typical practice to delegate that review authority to the Director of Planning, and that he will then review the site plan and not sign off on it until the site plan is consistent with whatever development standards are required as part of the approval. It also requires that any material, like rock and landscaping material that would be associated with the building, has to be stored so that it can't leach or blow. What it actually says is stored in bins, and they can't use parking spaces as storage or loading. And they are limited on the amount of outdoor storage that they can have. And anything that's screened or stored has to be screened from ground-level view so that you can't see it from driving along the street, or if you were an adjoining property owner. And then finally, publication of the resolution authorizing the zone change shall not occur until the site plan has been approved. And so those are just kind of the highlights on the protective overlay. As you can see here, the application area is zoned SF20 and is surrounded by SF20, single-family zoning, for quite a distance. The white area is SF5, single-family 5, that's located inside the city of Wichita, has a 5,000-square-foot minimum lot size, and primarily allows single-family uses. The SF20 has a half-acre, 20,000-square-foot minimum lot size, and primarily allows single-family uses. There are some other institutional civic uses that can be allowed by right, but primarily it was designed to be single-family. Here's an aerial showing the uses out there now. The property to the east is basically Tall Grass Prairie. There's the application area. The applicant owns this property as well. Immediately to the west of the application area, it has a residence on it. They have been renovating it, and my understanding is that they may live there, they may not. So that's why this particular use cannot be considered as a rural home occupation, because at this point, we have no guarantee that the applicant's going to live there for any length of time. Then you can see, there's a home here, home here, homes to the northeast, and here, and then down to the southwest. Comprehensive plan shows this area as being here and is under the category of agricultural and/or vacant. Here's the draft site plan that we have at this point, showing some of the existing trees that are in place, and then some of the trees that they will have to plant in order to fill in the gaps. But the applicant has been advised that if they're using landscape materials, they have to be six feet tall, and it has to provide a solid screen like a six-foot-tall fence would. And so they're aware of that. And the other issues, you know, they're showing the access points and storage areas and buildings. And this is the house that is also part of the applicant's ownership. What, I included this to try and address the concern that if this were approved, it would be spot zoning. Spot zoning is a term that's used to describe a zone change that is approved that only benefits a single person, that it benefits that person at the expense of surrounding property owners, and it does not have any community-wide positive impact. And so what you can see here is the county did not have countywide zoning until 1985. Portions of this area within three miles of the city limits of Wichita were rezoned in 1958 to, they had different terms, but essentially what would be today would be SF20, and that's the pink color. And then they also zoned portions of it to RR Rural Residential, only back then it was called R1. They also rezoned the intersections of section-lined roads, 600 by 600-foot square from the center line, on most of the intersections of section-lined roads, with limited commercial zoning at each of the four corners. All of these circles represent approximately 70 different zone changes that have occurred since 1985, out in the county, since the RR Rural Residential District and the SF20 districts were established. So they were, the property was either RR or SF20 and was rezoned to a different use. And I think I provided you in the briefings a ledger-sized sheet that had some of the specific zonings, but some of these, they went to general industrial, they went to limited industrial, they've gone to GC, general commercial, they've gone to limited commercial, they've gone to SF20, RR to SF20. And so in effect, the RR District and the SF20 District have basically acted as a holding zone until a property owner has a specific use that's different than what they're zoned, and then they come in and go through the process, and each case is considered individually on its own merits and either approved or denied. And so the whole point of showing this is that if this case is approved, it is not something unique that has happened only today. It has happened at least 70 times in the past. And there is the home that's not in the application area. The application area is off to the left, and since you've seen this before, I won't go through the rest of them unless you need me to, but I will then try and answer questions, and the applicant is here and can describe in detail if you have more questions about his operation.
Thank you, Dale. I don't see any questions.
I don't see any questions, I appreciate it. Dave? Do we have anything from legal we need to discuss before we move into public comment? Very good. We'll go into public comment, everyone heard the rules on how we run public comment. Mr. Kaplan, I imagine that you're the agent, so you're the first one to sign up anyway, so that takes care of the first step. Please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes.
Chair Commissioners, Bob Kaplan, 1600 Epic Center. You know, this case has had three evidentiary hearings already, this is going to be the fourth. I think about everything that can be said, has been said, and I see no value in repeating everything that you've already heard, and the planning commission has heard twice. I had a little different approach to this. Rather than take issue with comments or clarifications that were required, what I did was, I took the minutes from our last meeting, the meeting in which you remanded it, and I extracted from those minutes, the comments and the critiques that were made by commissioners. And then I went to work and drew a protective overlay, which addressed each one of those issues. And you have that PO in front of you, or you should have it in your file, it's got 17 points. And what was very interesting about that, I thought, staff did the same thing, we had no coordination, we had no communication, but staff did exactly what I did, they took the minutes, extracted anything that came forth from that last meeting, said, "I need clarification of this," or "I critique that," and what I did was, I addressed it with the protective overlay and the restrictions. And of course, we agree with all the conditions that Mr. Miller talked about. So I think, I think that I have addressed every issue that came up, and I think I've addressed it appropriately. That's a, that's a long list of POs, but that's the way I, that's the way I approached it, because there just wasn't any point in repeating what you've already heard. One of the concerns from these few folks that surround this area is proximity of this to their homes, there is none. What we did, we prepared a little, I don't know if you can stand up here so they can see that. If you'll notice, there's, there's a graph of the site, and there are the distances to each of the homes that are out there. Most of them are 2,400, 2,500 feet away, the closest one is about 1,700 or 1,800 feet. So, you know, if you look at a city block, and you consider a city block to be 300 lineal feet, then these homes are eight blocks away, the nearest one is five or six blocks away. So I believe there is no proximity issue. The last complaint that came up with spot zoning, I don't, I don't really agree that it is spot zoning. I think that that's a legal issue, would have to be determined by the court, it's an issue of law, whether it constitutes spot zoning. I don't believe that going from residential to OW is spot zoning, frankly.
Mr. Kaplan, I'm afraid your time is up.
Is that it?
That's it, thank you.
All right. I believe, I believe Commissioners, that this is a appropriate project in an appropriate location, I'd ask that it be approved.
Thank you. The next speaker is Will Stulzott. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you Commissioners, Will Stulzott, 8217 East Ponee. I don't really have anything else to add, if there is questions, I'm available to answer them now.
Very good. I don't see any questions at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Matthew Holcomb. Please state your name for the record, you will have three minutes.
Thank you Commissioners, Matthew Holcomb, I'm an attorney from Hinkle Law Firm, I'm here representing Chris Lett and his wife Jennifer, who's not here, they live at 14900 East Ponee. So when I was analyzing this issue, I thought, where do I go to get guidance on what to do with the golden factors in the context of spot zoning? And the one place that I found guidance was an unpublished Kansas Court of Appeals decision titled Rolfe v. Jackson County. This is unpublished, meaning it may not be binding precedent, it's not binding precedent, but it's guidance, because it's a case that involves spot zoning in the context of the factors. And in Rolfe, I'll just briefly tell you, the zoning request was from B1 to I2, which is about five degrees in Jackson County, the commission granted it, that was overturned by the district court, and the Court of Appeals affirmed that, saying it's unreasonable, it's too much. So that's where I went to get my framework for how to properly analyze this issue in the context of the golden factors. One of the other things that the Rolfe court did that I think is interesting is, on two occasions, it noted that there was no public comment, except from the applicant and the commission, in support of the change. On two occasions it did, and I, that's similar here. I've heard no public support for this change. So I think that's an important consideration. When I turn then to the golden factors and what the commission has done, I'm just going to express, I find trouble finding one analysis of a golden factor that's in favor of the zoning change. When I look at the staff report, and I go through the 1, 2, 3, 4, I think there's five different points where they analyze the factors, I have trouble finding one that would support this change. The first thing I find that maybe suggests, is in favor of it, is in paragraph three, where it suggests the site's location is on an arterial street between populated areas. I would just comment that that same reasoning was advanced at least on three different occasions in the Rolfe case. The Court of Appeals heard that reasoning and said, "No, that's not good enough." But all the other factors, as I read through it, suggest that this zoning change should not occur. And I'm not going to repeat the complaints, this commission is well aware of them. Even in comment four, the staff notes that a commercial use is not explicitly stated as an appropriate use here. So I'll just lastly comment that, you know, when I got my notice for today's meeting, I turned to the back page, and it's full of what I think is the protective overlay. Now I've heard this morning there's 17 points. When I hear that there's 17 points to address concerns, that to me is an indication that perhaps this is just too much. It's requesting too much, and we think it is, and that's why it should be denied. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker is Bill Giles. Mr. Giles, you will have three minutes. State your name for the record.
Bill Giles. One particular point to speak about is the gerrymandering that's occurred in the creation of the zoning description here. We have a set of land uses that are acceptable to the SF-20 that exists now, staff has gone up the ladder to grab one very, very, very narrow land use acceptable characteristic, and that's the landscape and landscape maintenance portion of the construction, sales, and services of the OW, and then has said that everything else in OW is unacceptable, and we return to the SF-20 zoning land use allowable conditions. And this is wrong, this is wrong. This is not a land use that should occur in this location, and we ask, on behalf of Bang's family, we ask that you vote no on this proposed zoning change. Do you have any comments or questions of me?
I do not see any questions, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Chris Lett. Please state your name for the record, sir.
Sorry. Chris Lett, I live at 14900 East Ponee, Wichita, Kansas. I did send three photos of their existing facility, and yes, our houses may be 12,000 to 2,000 feet away, but the property is right next door, and it's, Mr. Harrison slammed his vacant right at the moment, but if he were to develop property, this is possibly what he's going to have living next to him. If you could go to the one where their waste is washing into the ditch right now, they have used in the past the excuse that their landlord won't let them clean it up, which I find very vague, and I just can't believe that. But anyway, I would ask you not, I mean, not to prove it, based on the legal facts, as well as the fact it is going into a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lett. Please state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Paul Harrison, 1125 North Linden Circle. Thank you for hearing me, I did not have an opportunity to address this previously due to family tragedies. I do own the property directly across Ponee from this contested area. The plan has always been that that would at some point be developed, this will significantly negatively impact on my ability to do that. Talking about spot zoning, when you looked at the circles, those were all encompassing areas well away from this, and this is a spot within this map that you're being asked to rezone. And again, it will have a quite negative impact on my ability to use my property as I had planned 20 years ago. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on the zoning case at this time, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on the zoning case? Seeing no one, does Mr. Kaplan want to have a rebuttal? You'll have three minutes, sir.
Let me, let me take just a minute and clarify this spot zoning issue. In the first place, spot zoning is not unlawful. There is no prohibition against spot zoning, it's a planning tool, but these folks talk like if it's spot zoning, it's illegal. There's spot zoning all over the place around here, and there is nothing illegal about spot zoning, if you even agree that it is spot zoning. So the fact that it is a district different than the homes in the SF is not an impediment at all to prove it. We prove it, we approve it all the time, so I don't want anybody to believe that because it's spot zoning, it can't be approved, that's simply not true, that's not written anyplace in the law at all. And each case has to stand on its own merits, you can't use a lot of precedent in this, because each case is different, each site's different. The other thing, and I think the last thing I want to point out, is keep in mind that Ponee, Ponee is an arterial, it's a minor arterial, but it's an arterial nevertheless. Ponee is not a collector, it's not residential, it's an arterial and designed to carry a lot of traffic. Traffic counts are not big out there now, because it's so sparse. And I guess the last thing I'd have to say, is the city owns clear up to the county line on the east, from this site to the Butler County line is city-owned property. If the city objected to this, Dale Miller wouldn't be here recommending at Woody. So the fact that the planning department is recommending approval is pretty strong evidence that the city of Wichita has no objection. With that, I'll take any questions, if any.
I do not see any questions, thanks, sir. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item before I bring it back to the board? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to the board. Commissioner Meister.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Justin, can I ask, I see the, we've been supplied the minutes from the second planning hearing, and it looks like there was much, much more testimony than the first planning commission meeting, including, I see where Mr. Holcomb presented and Mr. Giles presented, looks like similar to what they just presented to us, from their own interpretation of the legal side of this, of this issue. Does the planning commission have, so the planning commission heard the same thing that we just heard, basically from their legal perspectives, is that pretty much correct, what I read?
Justin Wagner, assistant county councillor, Commissioner Meister, I think that's correct, I think the arguments that were stated by both sides are quite similar.
So the, the planning commission, when they have that, I know they have a lot of things they consider on various cases, but, including legal presentations from, from both sides, the applicant and maybe somebody opposed to the applicant. So does the commission then refer, do they, do they take in consideration what they believe is, is the legal authority to?
And that's a good question, Commissioner Meister, and both the, both the planning commission, and in your case, in the county commission, you're both sitting in quasi-judicial capacity. That doesn't mean you are judges, but you're tasked with some judge-like responsibilities on a zoning case, and so I think it's relevant in certain cases, especially such as this case, where spot zoning came up, for example, such an issue, and I did give, you'll see it in a minute, a brief presentation on spot zoning. And so, I mean, they, they do take that into, into factor, you know, when they consider a zoning case, I think that's, you know, it probably weighs differently on all 14 of the planning commissioners, just like it would on all five of you, because it depends on your viewpoint and how you judge the, the facts that are in front of you. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, okay. And so then, after hearing that, and the protective overlay was probably, the protective overlay seems to be a new, a new instrument than from what we heard a month ago, or whatever.
Well, a month ago, the protective overlay was, was part of what was the recommended action in front of you, it was more detailed, in other words, more conditions were added this time. And as, as Mr. Kaplan explained, I think some of those, the protective overlays that were submitted at the planning commission level by both Mr. Kaplan and the planning department staff were quite similar, and they were expanded to a certain degree, probably depends on who you ask, how much from what was in front of you the first time. And I think, I think Dale Miller could probably speak to that more clearly as to what the differences were than I could, but.
Okay, yeah, Dale, you addressed that somewhat in your presentation, didn't you?
Yes, I mean, the, the original protective overlay only had seven items, but that's because we had a kind of catch-all that basically says that all applicable state, county, and other permits, inspections, and standards shall be met. And so in an effort to try and address specific concerns, we then pulled existing requirements that were either in the OW district, or are required by other parts of the code, and that's how we got to the 17 instead of the original seven. It was, we tried to make it clear so that the neighbors would know exactly what they were dealing with. And so, yeah, there was a protective overlay, when you reviewed this the first time, it just only had seven items.
Okay, so it's been expanded, so to speak. And the, so the, the planning commission felt that was adequate at 11 to 3 vote, and the applicant felt okay with the, with the additional?
The applicant has indicated that they are in agreement with the conditions that the planning commission approved. In fact, as Mr. Kaplan stated, we basically married staff's protective overlay with the one provided by the applicant, and that's what the planning commission recommends, we just combined those into one document.
Okay, thank you Dale and Justin, and I might have another comment later, but I'll yield to whatever other questions may come up.
Very good. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm just trying to find out some, some of the new information that was just presented today. I'd like to ask, I guess, Mr. Harrison, you talked about potentially developing the land, your land, this to the north of the subject property, can you, can you speak to, what are, what are those plans exactly? Have you talked about a subdivision, or what are you, what are you thinking about going to the north of subject property? And how's that, I'm trying to find out, it's currently zoned, your land is currently zoned.
You need to go to the podium dancer, because we don't pick you up on the mic if you don't.
It's 80 acres, it's agriculture, it's been in cropland, we're the third signatures on the deed for this land from when it was released from the US government. So it's been in cropland all that time, but all of the area around that is being developed into mid-to-upper level, single-family homes, and that was what we've planned to do with the property since we acquired it.
So your, your vision for the land, your land in the future is to have this developed into subdivision residential homes?
Yes, as the ones north of us, the east of us, and all around us.
Okay, all right. Thank you for, thank you for that answer. I have a question for Justin, if that's okay. Justin, have you, are you familiar with the case that Mr. Holcomb presented to us today?
Yes, I am, Commissioner Howell, I had mentioned it during my presentation to the planning commission as well.
So are you, are you able to validate, I guess? So are you, are you able to validate, I guess, the, the, the facts of the case that was presented to us?
Perhaps in part, perhaps not. In part, I would say that it is an unpublished decision where it analyzed spot zoning. It was the first time spot zoning had been analyzed by the Kansas appellate courts since 1974. In that opinion, they, it was a concrete plant. And as Mr. Kaplan did say, it's important to keep in mind, case-by-case basis, I believe that Mr. Holcomb did, you know, address some facts that would make that analogous to this. I think there's some differences clearly, too. This, this use is not as intensive as a concrete plant would be. The two uses that were by it were bowling alley and a restaurant. It was an industrial use. It was a change from neighborhood commercial to industrial usage. Also, I think it's worth, worth mentioning, and Dale talked about the reasons for protective overlay. A protective overlay is to really put in place measures to perhaps make a zone change less intensive. In this case, you know, Office Warehouse has a whole host of uses that would not be permissible in SF 20. And this is really a subset of one of about, I think there's about 25 different uses. And if the county commission would like, I have a document that would show the one use that's allowed under the protective overlay versus about the 20 or so uses that would not be allowed. I'd be happy to hand that out if you'd like to see it, just be able to see. Because I know there's been something made of the fact that it is a change up in 12 classes or a number of steps up in the zoning code. And that's true. But it's also worth keeping in mind that it's for this one very specific use. And I think Dale's mentioned some of the conditions that are in place to try to mitigate the impact of that. Back maybe a little bit more specifically to your question on Rolf, the court analyzed that case really under the golden factors. They ended up looking back, which are the factors you use on every zoning case, to determine whether the use is reasonable or not. Because of the spot zoning analysis, really kind of got incorporated into the golden factors. Because the golden case came out about four years after the last published opinion in the 1970s on spot zoning. So I hope that helps some to give you some answers on this. It's worth keeping in mind, that's an unpublished decision, so it would not necessarily be binding on district court judges. But that would be persuasive, they'd look at it. I hope that helps some. But if you have more specific questions on that, I'd be happy to address them.
A couple more questions. And if you have that data at your fingertips, I'll take that at any time. But my next question would be, does this open up, I guess, does it make it, I guess, more likely that, say, maybe an adjacent property would be able to get similar zoning because of this property? Does it establish, if you will, a precedent for the area saying, because this property has OW zoning class, that other properties nearby would be able to get that or maybe even a higher use? More likely?
Commissioner Howell, I, I don't think it necessarily establishes precedent. Each zoning case is unique in its own merits, has its own conditions surrounding property owners that may or not oppose the zoning, community concerns, and public health and welfare benefits. So I don't know that it necessarily sets any type of precedent one way or another.
Okay. And with respect to this particular, the subject property today, if they decided to change the use to something slightly different to the landscape, and they'd have to go back through the process?
That's correct. The, the owners within 1,000 feet would get notice and there'd be a public hearing.
What if it's less than OW? Even in that case, do they have to go back?
I'm, I might let Dale address that particular question, Commissioner Howell.
If it's any use other than what is specifically allowed by the protective overlay, then yes, they would have to file an amendment to the protective overlay. And there would be public notice and public hearing.
Let me ask one other question since you're at the mic. How, how, how common is it to have a, the SF 20, I guess, expressly allowed with an OW? Or have two zones, if you will, mixed by express statements in the, in the?
We do that all the time in the protect, using protective overlays because that way we don't have to list every use in the protective overlay. You know, it's not unusual at all for, for a limited commercial application to, to name the use and then restrict it to SF 5 or B uses, whatever the next step down is. And that way, we don't have to list all of the uses that are allowed because they're all enumerated in the zoning code.
So even as SF 20, they would have a lot of opportunity to do things like other outbuildings and things like that as, under SF 20?
Yes, but they would have to be accessory to a residential use. It couldn't just be, the site plan is going to control any, any new building on that property or new construction would have to be done in conformance with the existing site plan. If, if this were approved, subject to the site plan that we have now, any new buildings would have to come back and have the site plan adjusted or amended in order to, to do additional buildings other than those uses that are accessory to a residential use.
I guess what I'm getting to is it seems like the protective overlay, as good as it is, and it is more extensive than we saw before. And I think the plain language of the overlay actually does its job this time. It actually does restrict it to landscape. But there are a lot of things you can do under SF by right that, for example, how you store equipment on the property, or how you park the equipment on your property. And SF, I think, would be much more, a lot more liberty on, on how you do those things on SF, even though it's being restricted on the protective overlay in this case. So SF provides a lot of opportunities, a lot of rights, how you store equipment, and how you store vehicles.
But it would all have to be, for example, and Kelly Dixon's here, can explain, but for example, a dump truck that's over a certain weight, you can only have one of those on a SF 20 zone property without having a different kind of zoning or conditional use in place.
We have, we had, not to change the subject, we have a property south in the, in, in the county that has around 20, say, 15 to 20 semi-trucks there on the weekends.
They're, depending on what they're zoned, they may well be illegal.
Okay, well, I believe that was considered allowed under the home occupation business to do maintenance on these facility, on these vehicles, and wash them and change oil on them and things like that in the, on the weekends. And so I guess under SF, we, we allow quite a lot. And so I'm trying to understand the protective overlay, if it restricts those types of uses.
I don't know if you want Kelly to explain on what he would do with a use like that or not. But, I mean, we'd have to have more details. But the, there's no doubt that the rural residential home, or the home occup, the rural home occupation section has opened up a lot more uses. The problem with this property is they don't, they're not saying they're going to stay living there. So that's why they're not using the, the home occupation route. That's why they filed the, the zone change.
All right. I may have a question or two here in just a moment, but all that others speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a couple of questions. For the gentleman who has future plans, could you, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Paul Harrison.
Thank you, Paul. Do you, do you see in light of all of the, the protests that's here, do you think your future plans will, will be under the same scrutiny?
I think it will significantly limit who would want to build an upper-scale home on that property, or what are five or so acre tracts we would plot it in. The overlay sounds nice, but proof is in the pudding. Two or three years down the road, when those trees die or aren't grown to their expected screening capacity, who comes back and enforces that?
I don't, I don't mean to interrupt you. Let's say, though, this doesn't, this doesn't pan out. Do you see any problem in the future with what your future plans are with your neighbors?
If this is rezoned, yes, it will negatively impact the-
No, that's not, that's not what I asked. If this does not happen today, right?
Correct.
We don't approve this today. And your plans in the future, do you think that you will come under the same scrutiny?
I would expect to have the same.
So yes.
Requirement, yes.
Okay, thank you. And for the applicants, can you guys address the issue with the pictures that were shown? Could we pull those back up? I just kind of want to hear from you, you know, about these pictures.
Sure. So these were taken quite a while ago. Since then, we've cleaned up quite a bit. The, the waste and stuff is just too difficult to get to without more solid surface, which we cannot do. So when the dry weather comes, we do as best we can to get everything out of there. This particular picture was taken, I think, during the summer when we were at high capacity, doing a lot of work. We've already said that we do not plan to continue this, down this route. We are going to be good neighbors. We're going to remove waste in appropriate fashion. That's all put into the protective overlay.
I would hope so. You guys are a landscape company, so I would hope it would be beautiful.
Yeah. And to have our own building that we can landscape the way we want it done. And show off what we want to do.
So this, the, the, the comment that was made that your landlord would not let you clean it up?
Not let us clean it up is not, we could not get in there to clean it up because of the rains would come. The spring was very wet. These pictures were taken shortly after that. The water was still standing. It was too difficult to get to.
So if we were to take the same image today, it would not look like this?
No, the ditch has been cleaned out. The drainage has been corrected. Most of the piles have been removed.
The tarp is gone. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the commission?
Chairman, could I make one quick comment?
Certainly.
And, and it's not to say that, I think as commissioners, you can take into account any of the, the existing character of the neighborhood, the uses of the property, the zoning, that kind of thing. There is case law out there that indicates a speculative uses for property should not be the basis for a zoning decision. So I just want to caution you on that, because I know there's been testimony along those lines. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, I don't see any other comments. Dale Miller, could you go back up to the podium for a moment?
I've known Dale Miller for probably 15, 20 years now. I served on the district advisory board when they were advising, advisory board. I served on the Metropolitan Planning Commission when Dale Miller was first a planner. And for the last, what, five or six years, been director of planning. And today is his very last meeting with us. I want to wish Dale Miller the best in his future life. He's a fellow OU grad, so he and I can root for the Sooners. He has a daughter over in Norway, I believe, that-
Netherlands.
Netherlands, that he's going to go visit here and spend some time with, with his daughter. And he's going to have a very deserved rest after working with us in planning for a number of years. So what I want to do today is, I know we're worrying about a, a zoning case right now, but this is the last chance that we're going to have to tell Dale, thank you very much for your service to our community. We sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
I appreciate the kind words. It's been a privilege to, to be here for 33-plus years.
Didn't mention his book that he's going to write.
And Dale, I want to thank you personally for my, my years at the city council, for your assistance in helping me understand the multiple layers of zoning issues. The city has many more cases than the county does, as you know. And, but I, I want, I truly appreciate everything you did to help, help me understand. And thank you, and good luck with your future.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions. And I want to, again, congratulate and thank Dale Miller as well for all your service. There's a couple of jobs in the county that are very, 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 very tough. And I think you're have, you have one of those very tough positions. And so thank you for all you've done for Sedgwick County. I do have a question on enforcement. I'm not sure who can answer this question. But if there is non-compliance with the overlay, how does that get resolved?
Kelly, state your name for the record, please.
Kelly Dixon, Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. So enforcement, we work, we're complaint-driven. So as our department receives complaints, we go out and investigate. We find non-compliance with the protective overlay or any of the other zoning requirements, we would issue a notice of violation.
And I, I know that we've done that on a few other things in my district in the, in the last few years. And it's very, a very lengthy process. And after that, notice of violation has been issued, if they don't remedy the problem at that point, then what happens?
Typically, we issue a 15-day notice. At the end of 15 days, we'll go back to review the property to see if there's been any change, if they've working on it. You know, some cases are more difficult than others to get cleaned up. If they are making progress, we may issue up to a 30-day extension. If nothing has been done, we would issue a uniform criminal complaint, a citation at that time, and turn it over to the court.
And our experience at that, I've, I've had some cases go to the court. And what happens at that point? They say they continue to-
It can be a lengthy process. The judges tend to, our judges tend to work with the citizens to achieve compliance. I mean, that's, that's the goal, is just to get to compliance. And so they've oftentimes in the past given further extensions to, to get there.
And eventually, there potentially would be fines assessed?
Correct. We would, we would, as part of the citation, it includes a fine.
Is that a personal fine or against the property?
It's against the owner.
Against the owner. Okay. And if they don't pay that fine, it just sits there?
If they don't pay that fine, I guess they're, and I'm getting into the law side a little bit. But I mean, they can be a bench warrant issued and they can be arrested.
They could, okay.
Yes.
But that, that's pretty extreme. We've never, we've never, we've never really seen that happen, I don't think, probably.
We've had a few occasions where we've had those that have ignored the court for many, many, many months and have found themselves in jail.
Okay. And Commissioner Howell, Kelly did a good job of answering those questions. There's just one or two slight tweaks I might offer is, none of the county court cases can actually land you in jail. But sometimes defendants do end up in jail because of contempt of court, failing to appear for a court date. They'll often be given court dates by which they're supposed to pay their fine or appear in court. And they'll, they'll do neither one. And so their bench warrant might be issued. So sometimes they do end up in jail because of that. But none of the offenses actually, as part of their sentence, have jail attached to them in county court.
Okay, that's, that's kind of what I thought. I wanted to just clarify that so everybody here understands that. Do we know whether or not the, their land site in Butler County where they currently operate out of, do they have any type of similar restrictions over there in terms of overlay or, or zoning that would, you know, that maybe would demonstrate perhaps whether they've been good, you know, good citizens and following all the rules and laws in that location?
No, sir, I'm not, I'm not aware of Butler County zoning laws. So, so I'm not sure where they-
So we don't have any data. Our assumption probably would be that they're doing what's, whatever's required of them at that place.
Would think so.
Okay, that's probably, I have to assume that they're doing the right thing there. And then I guess this is a, it isn't a major issue, but I'm just curious, what, does anybody know what the traffic count actually is on Pawnee at this location? It is not important, if you don't know. I'm just curious because it seems to be that there's concerns about changes in traffic. I want to just put that in, kind of percentage of the change.
I, I'm not aware of any, of any traffic counts.
All right. Well, that's all my questions for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I don't see any further questions from the commission. At this time, I move that we approve the zone change subject to the provisions of Protective Overlay Number 343 and follow the MAPC recommendation. Do I have a second?
Chairman, I'll, I'll second that and, and like to comment that I am seconding that based on the previous slide, number six, that, that showed the, the history of zoning cases around the county. And there could be a lot worse applications considered on this corner and this, or this area. And I would hesitate for our commission to consider future zoning cases that might be similar. And, and it could put us in a box, for me, it'd put me in a box to deny this one and then future, try to approve a similar one. So with that, I'm going to second the, the motion.
Thank you. I agree with your comments. I see no further, further comments. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, I guess, state for the record that I have, I, I understand both, both sides of this pretty, pretty well. I've spent a lot of time studying this. And I appreciate all of those that have reached out to me. And I did, again, just to reiterate the point that the chairman made earlier, they have had expert communication significantly. I, I walked into today's meeting seriously on the, sitting on the fence, trying to figure out what to do here. And I think both sides have very compelling arguments. And so I, I'm, I have quite a lot of trouble trying to figure out what to do here. I'm still looking at the golden factors, trying to determine what to do. And I, I guess I still have some concerns about some of the things that were raised just in the last, last 15 minutes or so, that I don't feel totally comfortable about this. And so I, I, that'll be reflected in my vote today. So I wanted you to know, I appreciate all that you have done. And I, and you are all my constituents. And I want to be supportive of all of you. Obviously, I can't do that today. I do, I do my best to do what I think is right. So that'll be reflected, reflected in my vote. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't see any further comments. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you all for your work today. I appreciate it. Uh, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, CIP Amendment for Installation of Solar Panels at County Facilities.
Andrew, Andrew here?
Yep.
There he is. Morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Commissioners. Andrew Diltz, Facility Manager, here to present the Sedgwick County Solar Panels, uh, County Facilities CIP Amendment.
Andrew, you want to wait just a second? We'll let the room calm down.
Okay.
That way everybody can hear. All right, Andrew. Thank you.
A little bit of background on the, uh, solar panels. Um, Commissioner Cruz and some county staff visited Maze High earlier this year. They recently, uh, began a solar project out there. Um, we visited with the contractor and Stan Burkamp, uh, who is a, uh, teacher at Maze High on their project and the development of the project. Uh, we kind of discussed the criteria of that, that project and came back to the, the main courthouse, evaluated the main courthouse and the adult detention as they are the highest users of electricity. Uh, as possible candidates for a solar, um, project here, they were ruled out based on the, uh, bulk discount that we purchased electricity from Evergy On as a, it didn't have a very good ROI. Smaller facilities were evaluated. That included the EMS, tag, and extension office. And, uh, based on the following criteria, the extension office was chosen to move forward. We used the, um, return on the investment, uh, the ROI. We wanted a high-traffic area. We evaluated the age of the roof and the existing equipment on the roof and the distance from the building transformer to the solar generation panels. Here we have a comparison of the ROI if we do a roof, roof mount solar panel project versus the ground mount. Um, the small green box shows you the size of the system that we would install, which would be a hundred and eight kilowatts. The price that we purchased the electricity from Evergy is point zero eight five cents per kilowatt hour. The annual production rate, uh, from the solar array would be a hundred and forty-one, two hundred and thirty PV watts. Uh, we do not, um, we're not applicable for tax, so the tax rate would not apply to us. And the sticker price or the purchase price of the solar system for the roof mount would be two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, I'm sorry, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars versus the ground mount at two hundred and forty-five for, two hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. The columns, um, the first column shows the years. Uh, the second column shows the electricity price, if it was to rise five percent every year. The third column shows the kilowatt hour offset. That, that's the amount of solar power our array would generate and provide to us. The dollar amount per year, that's what it would equate, um, with the, uh, if the, the rate stayed the same every year. If our rate increased five percent every year, that would be the fourth column, uh, showing us our cost savings annually. The payback column is the zero percent rise. That shows the amount, uh, coming off the initial purchase price of the solar array. And the last column is the, uh, if the, what's Evergy bill increased five percent every year, what the, uh, the payback would be back to the county. The, um, extension office, on average, a three-year average, we spend thirty-three thousand dollars in electricity there. Um, this slide shows the differences, the pros and cons of the mounting locations, the, the roof mount versus the, uh, the ground mount. As you can see, the ROI on the ground mount is a little bit better, even though it is more, more money. It does have a quicker return on the ROI. It does have a higher production rate because the, uh, the panels can be mounted at a, uh, at a more optimal angle, uh, to benefit, uh, solar generation versus, um, when they're mounted on the roof, we have, uh, they have to be mounted at a, at a lower angle to account for wind and snow loads. There, if we mount the panels on the ground, we may be prone to, uh, to theft or vandalism. The, we would potentially limit some of the ground space for future events at the, uh, the extension office, and we would have to, uh, maintain the vegetation that would may grow around these as well. The installation and maintenance options, we wanted to make sure that we had received a payback on, on the system before we had to invest anything else into, uh, into warranties or replacement costs. The inverters come with a twelve-year warranty. The replacement cost today would be thirty-five thousand dollars. We're anticipating a fifteen-year anticipated useful life, and, uh, we've, we've included thirty-three hundred dollars to add an extended warranty to make sure that we have warranty coverage for up to twenty years, ensuring that we'll receive our payback. The solar panels have a twenty-five-year warranty. Their anticipated useful life is thirty to forty years, and the optimizers have a twenty-five-year warranty. We also included with the contractor them to perform performance monitoring, um, come back and clean the panels at year intervals two, five, and ten, and perform preventative maintenance inspections. Here is a aerial view of the extension office if we were to mount two hundred and seventy roof-mounted panels. Here's an example of what the roof-mounted panels would look like. Um, these are, uh, are not secured to the roof. They are, they're simply weighted down with, uh, cinder blocks or sandbags, um, uh, and, and just held down by gravity. Here's an example of the ground-mounted array that's at Maze High. And we, if we did proceed with the roof mount at the extension office, we would put ten visible panels, uh, secured to the roof on the west entrance of the facility, so, so public and staff would be able to view these, uh, every time they entered the facility from the west. We would also add an additional ten panels on the east entrance or the north entrance, entrance from Twenty-first Street, uh, so staff and public could view those as well. The funding source for this project would come from year-end transfers supported with general fund cash. And I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the commissioners? I don't see any questions right now. Uh, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I apologize for not having my data, uh, together yet. I, I spent a little, little bit of time yesterday trying to, um, do some analysis on, on the, on the, uh, energy production that this array would make. And, uh, just to be clear, the hundred and eight kilowatts is maximum, uh, generation. That's if you had, uh, direct ninety-degree sun, clear sky. And, um, there actually is a temperature component. I'm trying to figure that one out still. There's, we also know there's attenuations for things like dust. The biggest attenuation would be from sun incidence. And I think that those things must be taken into account, um, because we have, you know, about ten hours of daylight in the middle of winter versus fourteen or fifteen hours of daylight in the middle of summer. And the incidence of the sun to these, to these panels that are fixed, it does change their performance. And so, uh, basically, uh, an array like this at the North Pole would not be very effective half the year. Half the year might produce, uh, quite a bit, I suppose, but at the Equator, um, it would be a much more useful year-round because of the way the geometry, the geometry of that works. But anyway, having said that, I'm trying to validate. So in other words, what I'm trying to say is that latitude of the, of the, of where you are on the planet changes how well this works. And in Wichita, um, I'm just trying to figure out whether or not these numbers actually make sense. The hundred and eight kilowatts is really not the number we ought to be using here. I, I don't know if the hundred and eight kilowatts is what's fed into these payback, um, projections. If it is, then I have some serious concerns about that. And I'm trying to figure out exactly how much energy this would produce based on, I guess, scientific analysis, uh, using all the various factors we can think of.
Very good question. The hundred and eight kilowatts, um, refers to the system size as far as, uh, each panel is able, able to produce three hundred and seventy-five watts maximum. So that is correct. If, if the sun is, is hitting them directly, um, at, at that given moment, they'll be able to put out three hundred and seventy-five watts. Um, every year, these panels produce a little bit less. And that's shown on the payback calculator here as far as the kilowatt hour offset. You can see that number in year one is optimum, and every year it reduces a little bit more as we, as we go down. And that's been factored into the ROI.
What I'm wondering, again, that's talking about the degradation of the panels themselves because they don't work as well, you know, as they age, they don't work as well. I'm talking about things like, um, in fact, we have cloudy days, the fact that we have, you know, they're mounted at a fixed angle, and the sun will either be above or below that angle, um, basically, most of the year. There's probably going to be one, you know, so, a few days of the year is pretty much ninety degrees, but other days it will not be ninety degrees. And so those are, those are attenuation factors that must be taken into account. My, my question is, the hundred and eight, hundred and eight thousand kilowatts, um, I'm sorry, hundred and eight, hundred and eight kilowatts is, is a maximum power on day one, you know, if everything was optimized. Uh, obviously, those are not realistic. The realis, the reality is there's a lot of things that are going to happen here that's going to reduce that number when we do our projections in terms of how valuable this is, in terms of reducing our energy dependence. I don't understand the equation well enough to understand whether, whether or not, what, what are, what's the number we're using to calculate our payback?
I don't have that equation, but, uh, King Solar provided these numbers, and they, they do factor that into, um, their equation when they, when they produce this.
And not to, not to say they're not being honest and, and, and very, very, uh, great at what they do. I would like to have this done maybe from a, you know, a non-biased perspective, make sure that whoever's doing all the analysis is not, doesn't have a, doesn't have a, uh, a reason to promote solar panels or not. They're just simply saying, here's how the work, here's how the math works. And I'm trying to find that data. Unfortunately, it's kind of hard to find. And so I've only had about, you know, a day or so to, to really understand this deeply. We got the numbers yesterday morning, and I've spent some time yesterday, and I just didn't get to an end point. I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, I believe that the hundred and eight, a hundred and eight kilowatts is what's being used to generate our payback chart here. And if that's true, that's not realistic. We, we know it's going to be less than that. I don't know how much.
And that number can change. Um, there, there are a lot of options that, that we can, we can proceed with this and try to change it so that the ROI is quicker than what it is at this point. This is just a basis for us to get started and to, to try to determine whether or not we're going to continue going forward at this point, or if, or if-
Well, okay, so then while we consider this, again, we did talk about this a little bit yesterday, but I do think that the county needs to do kind of an energy audit of all of our buildings, especially the bigger buildings. This building, for example, in terms of insulation, windows, uh, LED lighting or, or, you know, cost-efficient, cost-efficient lighting, that type of thing. Maybe have timers that turns things off when you're not in the room, for example. There's all kinds of things we might be able, might be able to, to consider that would reduce our energy consumption. Uh, and I'm not sure where we are with any of that. Uh, it seems like it's a great topic. Lots of companies have gone through the process of trying to fit, you know, make, make their, their buildings energy efficient. I don't think we've done that, uh, satisfactorily, at least in our buildings, and so that's a great topic. This may be part of the solution. I'm not sure it's the right solution at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
I'd like to-
Commissioner Howell?
Uh, Meitzner? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Commissioner Howell, you, you bring up some good points, but, uh, or not but, but, uh, but, I guess, as I said it. Yesterday's, uh, presentation from-
Stan Burkamp?
Stan Burkamp. It was, uh, I, I didn't understand this very well as well, except I thought he was, did a fantastic job of explaining and even got into some kilowatt number discussions. And, and, uh, I felt that, uh, what stuck out to me was his, uh, his observation, not from this data, but when he said something like a seven percent return or a seven, on the, uh, on their existing, uh, thing out at Maze Road and the angle of the panels and those kind of things, I, you know, it's way, way above me and how many days or hours of light, things like that. But the bottom line is, as of a business decision, in a way, that actually, uh, made me feel more comfortable than just going green or some, some of the other things that are, that are kind of said from, uh, from, you know, just a, uh, lack of a better term, maybe a feel-good about going green effort. I think it actually had, I, I've just really appreciated Mr. Burkamp's, uh, um, presentation and, and his explanation and his answer even to all of our questions. And so, uh, I, I just wanted to kind of be on record saying that, uh, and, and I, well, the last thing, I'm sorry, is that, uh, I know we're looking at a study, uh, an energy study county-wide on all our buildings, and I agree with that. Uh, we don't know yet what the cost of the study will be. We don't know what the results of the study will be. There could be all the things we mentioned before, and then, and then what'll come in front of us will be a, either recommendation or we'll have to make decisions and prioritize what's most important, and that might take a year from now, or whatever, whatever, however, the speed of government works, which is not quick sometimes. So I, I kind of feel good about this, this step, so we get kind of a, we know what it's going to do for energy. We know, we've got a facility. We know, we know what its, what its impact is while we're looking at everything else. And I think this, this little thing could get lost in the, in the shuffle of the big analysis, uh, and some of the data. And it's not like an IRB where ten years, you know, you, you pass an IRB and then the property tax value comes back on starting ten years later. Uh, it's, looks like to me like this thing has an impact right away. So that, that's just my, my comments from yesterday. And, and, uh, I'm, I'm kind of in favor of thinking that we could, uh, take a step forward and for good for the, for the whole region. But that's just my comment.
Mr. Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I guess some of the things that I just want to mention, um, there's, you don't have any reason to believe, I mean, that Mark would be inflating numbers, Mark is with King Solar. Um, or, like, he has no skin in this game. He has been helpful. What, what would you say?
At this point, I'm very appreciative of, of King Solar and the amount of data that they produced for us at, at no charge. Um, I don't believe that he would project numbers that would be wrong because that would be a bad image back on him at, at the end of this. Um, as well as, I've gone back to Stan and asked him to confirm the numbers that were projected to him initially by King Solar, and he said they were, they were almost dead-on, um, pretty much similar to, to what was, was, what was presented to him initially.
Thank you. I, I think we could be, um, if there was no example in our community, it, it might, I would be skeptical. But considering that we do have, um, an accurate example of one that's up right now, um, saving over, I think, thirty, almost thirty-five hundred dollars a month in electrical costs. When you think of the amount of electricity that we pay for, um, in a given year, it's two-point-one million dollars, I believe. And that's county, countywide. So, I mean, this isn't just this one building. When we think of saving taxpayer dollars, when we think of being, uh, fiscally responsible, when we think of, there was discussion yesterday about a building, and I believe there were some comments made about when we think about building a building, we're going to think for fifty years out, right? We're going to think long-term for the solution of the building. Why wouldn't we do the same with energy consumption? If we have the ability to, um, save money now, I think that we should do it. And also, I just want to point out the process. Um, I think that we had, yesterday, we were told that this is just one next step in the process. This is holding the money, right? This isn't spending the money. So this is just moving the process forward so that we can then go out for bid. King Solar has, they, they might not even get the bid. I mean, if it comes back that another company somewhere else can do it cheaper than this, this was just a starting point, minus the fence, right? So minus the fence, if we were going to do that. Um, but then we could get down to the exact penny. Um, so this is really just moving the ball forward. This is not saying, okay, we're going to spend this money today. This is, let's figure out what exactly it's going to cost, fence included, if that's the route that we take, um, so that we can not halt production. I am so excited that we are having this conversation. I am so thankful to, to the staff for stepping up to the plate. Um, and having an energy consumption, um, energy audit, I think, is something that's really great for Sedgwick County. We can be leaders in this. Um, Stan has inspired me, which I have now brought it back to the county to say, hey, what can we do in our community? It's that ripple effect that he talked about yesterday, which I thought was, um, very encouraging. The other thing, um, so I just want to point out that this is just one step in the process. If, if we find that it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars- If we find that it's $250,000 and it comes back to this board to actually spend the money, and you don't want to do it, or you don't feel comfortable, or you haven't analyzed it as much as you do, which I truly appreciate, then vote no then. But I think that this is, this is something that we can keep the ball going, keep the train moving down the track, so that we don't halt this, because we could be saving money. I mean, when we talk about, you know, in 25 years to reap $344,000, wow! That's a whole nother system that we could maybe put in place. That's, I think, the proof is in the pudding here. You know, when you break your leg, you go to a doctor and you trust that their expertise and the years that they have put into studying medicine, you probably wouldn't analyze them and say, hey, I don't think that you're doing a good job with my broken leg. So I don't know why we would do the same thing here with this solar company who has put in multiple systems. I've heard Mark speak on a couple of occasions, and he knows his stuff. To Commissioner Meitzner's point, this is a lot to kind of understand. And so to do this in just a couple of days, although this presentation was presented when?
Beginning of November, initially.
Okay, so we've had a little bit of time, but I think that we have to trust the experts. This is very detailed information. It's a lot to take in. So I would just encourage us all to pay attention to the experts, trust that they, he has no skin in this game as of yet. So he's giving us accurate information, I believe. So this is just moving the ball down the track. This is not saying we're going to spend the money right now. I would encourage us, we can do both at the same time. We can discuss this, and we can also discuss an energy audit that I think is much needed, and I'm so excited to hear that it seems like we do have support for that. So I'm going on for a long time, but I really appreciate the conversation, if anything else. When you look at the community, when you look at what's happening in our environment, I think it's important to be leaders in this, so that maybe we could inspire others. I did have, one final point. I did have a conversation, there is a group that is discussing net metering and hopefully getting that eliminated, so that we won't have those, that's obviously at the state of Kansas, so we'll have to work for that. But I think that this is, this conversation is growing, and the more people that get on board with this and see the values, see how much money we can save, and also be good stewards of our resources and our environment, it's just going to get further and further discussion going, which hopefully will then get laws changed. So that's my spiel. I would appreciate, it looks like we have some more comments, so have at it.
Very good. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Andrew, thank you for the presentation today. I still, to compare it to the Mays project, Andrew, is, I think, incorrect. Didn't they say yesterday that that was funded independently? So it wasn't taxpayer dollars, is that correct?
They do have a, they did receive a number of donations to help the buy-in of that project.
And we haven't even tried to do that.
That's correct.
Is that correct? So I just, I just think that this isn't ready for us to move forward until we know what the audit looks like. One of the things that was mentioned yesterday was that the cost continues to go down, so in another year, we could likely get better panels and for less money, because technology continues to improve while cost continues to go down. I think this might be something at a later date in an energy audit, that's something we might want to move forward to, and in multiple locations potentially. But these are taxpayer dollars. These are the citizens in our districts that, many of them struggling financially, that we're going out and we're energy speculating right now before we even do an audit. I just don't think it's the appropriate time for us to do this. I appreciate all the time that your staff has put in. I'm open to solar energy, but this, we can't compare this to the one in Mays if they didn't take taxpayer dollars to fund that project. I think we're dealing with a different animal here. But I do think it's important to continue the discussion. I appreciate the discussion. I think it's great. But this ain't ready for prime time, and what I would like is, I know Commissioner, Chairman Dennis mentioned yesterday about deferring it, so if that's a motion, I'll be supportive of that. So thank you very much, Andrew.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to be clear, I wanted to show respect to King Solar. I'm sure they're a very reputable company and do the very best job they possibly can. And to the extent that they're dead-on at Mays, that is very impressive. I would ask, what is the age of the Mays High School? Do we know where these panels are being used?
The age of the high school?
The reason I'm asking is because if it's a newer building, I assume it's fairly energy efficient, it's designed with energy efficiency in mind, I assume.
Is it at Mays South or Mays High School?
Mays High.
Mays High.
How old is it?
Okay. Well, they talk about 7% return on the investment. Again, that sounds like a great number, but we need to know the details exactly, you know, how they use the power. For example, when we generate power is not necessarily when we're going to use power here in Sedgwick County. We may generate power at 9:00 in the morning, but the building's being used at 9:00 at night, for example. And so for us, we're going to be using energy differently than what the Mays High School is potentially. So it also depends on how much energy you use. Just to be clear, they have a much larger solar array than what we're talking about here. I don't know the differences in size, but I know it's, theirs is much larger. So 7%, although that's a good number, I think it needs to be referenced to some of these pieces of data. I would say, I think, Evergy also is doing renewables, and I know that they're doing this, you know, the most cost-effective and efficient way. And so I know we have options of, I guess, partnering with Evergy to buy solar-produced power. And I don't know exactly how that works, but I know that that is an option for us. If we wanted to go down the solar path, then we have that option. And to do that, I think we might get more energy for the same dollars. I'd like to understand that more deeply. So if there's going to be a deferment, that'd be one of the questions I have, is to understand that more deeply. Where do we get the biggest bang for the buck? And also, just because we would, if we decide to go forward and get an RFP on this, and I think, Commissioner Cruz, you pointed out that this is not approving the project. This is simply just getting the next step to get some more information, and I appreciate that, and I think that's true, and I agree with you on that. We'll be talking about EMS station in just a few minutes, and I want to make the point that just planning ahead on a what-if expenditure doesn't mean we approve necessarily of the end result. So let's be clear, if we do go the next step, I want more data. I'm okay with that. But if we do go down that step and get more data, please understand, please understand, we need to be more thoughtful and have the opportunity to go back the other direction if that's what data proves. Data should be what drives this whole thing. And I, as a commissioner here, I want to do whatever the most efficient and effective for taxpayer dollars. If we can get the very best deal for taxpayers, whatever that is, ought to drive this decision. The pictures did show, one picture of the solar panels pointing north, so people could see it when they walked in the building. That makes no sense at all to me. If you want to put one on that north side of the building, make it a dummy, so that people can see something that looks like a solar panel, but let's not waste money by putting these in a way that impresses people, because I think it's going to send the wrong message. The wrong, the message I would get is, these people have no idea what they're doing. We want to look smart, and so to put panels in in a way that makes sense, point them towards the sun, is what makes us look smart, if we're going to do this. Anyway, I guess I support whatever is most efficient and effective. I'm not sure we know what that is yet. I'm okay getting more data, if that's the motion. I'm okay with deferring this while we continue to study. I think there's lots of opportunities for us to reduce our energy consumption. I don't know where the best, what the best strategy is, but I would love to know that before we make any actual decisions to spend money. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I know Commissioner Cruz has got her light on right now, but we're in a discussion phase right now, and I've still got public comment that we haven't gotten to. With your indulgence, I'd like to have public comment, and then we can come back, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah.
Very good. Then I will go to public comment. Philip Frazier has signed up to speak on public comment at this time. Please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning, Chairman Dennis and Commissioners. My name is Philip Frazier. I'm here today to express my support for the staff's recommended action to approve the CIP amendment for installation of solar panels at the county facilities. I believe this amendment is an incredibly fiscally responsible action. And kind of before I get into more of what I planned on saying, I just want to address a couple of things I heard. First, if I heard Andrew Dilts correctly, the maximum output is 375 kilowatts. So with all due respect, I believe 108 kilowatts does, being less than one-third of maximum, take into accounts any attenuating factors that were presented today. With respect to King Solar, they do a site evaluation for appropriateness, and they will actually say, this does not make sense. You should not install solar panels here. I find that to be very, of high integrity for a business to do that, to say, I'm sorry, don't spend your money with me, because it doesn't make sense. And that's not what we're hearing from King Solar. And then with regard to the energy study, and I appreciate wanting to do an energy study, but let's be clear, an energy study, whatever it finds, deals with use. Lowering our energy use benefits both systems. The current system, where we spend less money on our energy use, or a solar system, in which case more of the energy produced by the system gets fed into the grid, gets paid back to the county that way. Let's see. And kind of as is represented with the data, over the course of life, these systems not only pay for themselves, they pay for their replacements. That frees up funds for you as a county commission to be used in accordance with your strategic plan. This is smart budgeting. This is good stewardship of the taxpayer dollar. If these values of fiscal responsibility resonate with you, I ask that you vote in favor of the CIP amendment that's put forth before you today. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on the public agenda on this item, but if there's anyone else in the audience today that would like to speak on this item, I'll give an opportunity at this time. If there's no one, I'll bring it back to the board. Commissioner Cruz, thank you for your indulgence. You have your light on.
Sure. So just want to point out that when we talk about not a good use of taxpayer dollars, I really feel strongly that we're already spending the money. I mean, we're already going to pay for this electricity. Why not set up our county, the future of our county, to then pay for this by the sun? I mean, we are going to, we're going to reap the money. It's not only going to pay for itself, but we're going to get money from this. It's going to pay us. So why would we not do that? That, to me, I think is, I just want to point that out, and hopefully, maybe we can understand that. I really am not in favor of deferring this, because I feel like we're not spending the money now. We're just saying, hey, let's get some bids, let's figure out what the next step is. Again, if you don't want to vote for it then, vote no, but don't halt the process of us getting this going. So with that, I would like to make a motion, we approve the CIP amendment and understand the, and be fiscally responsible.
I'll second that. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We'll continue with discussion. Commissioner Howe?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a small comment towards Mr. Frazier. Thank you for your comments. I do want to clarify, so everybody understands, there's 290 panels at 375 watts per panel. Total production is 108,750 watts. That's 108 kilowatts, rounded off. So that's maximum. That's if you have direct sunlight at each panel. And if you want to put this into a kilowatt hours, when you have that situation that's working that way, it's 108,000 kilowatts, excuse me, 108 kilowatts per hour, if you want to think of it that way, at that moment. There's going to be points where you'll get close to that number, but there's going to be a lot of time where you're not getting close to that number because of attenuation factors that will happen. If we are, again, I don't mind getting data to go forward, but I don't know what it costs to develop an RFP and go out for bid. I'd like to have someone speak to that. Please let us know how much money we're talking about spending today to go to this next step. I'd like to know that. And as we continue to make this decision, I would like to have thorough analysis on lifetime costs, lifetime benefits. I want this to, I want us to understand it ourselves, not necessarily to second-guess what SolarKing is doing, but I want to trust but verify, if that makes sense. So I want to have lifetime costs, lifetime benefits. One of the things that's not been talked about yet was the inverters, which I'm sure are a very expensive part of the system, only have a 15-year life. And we're talking about a 25-year life for these panels. So we need to plan at least on one replacement of the inverters during this time. And there's also things like, how does this change in terms of maintenance of the area? I asked a question yesterday about what is this area being used for today? I never have got an answer on that yet. So I think there's still unanswered questions. We don't really understand the details of the benefits and the costs. I don't mind getting data. I don't know that we ought to spend money going to the next step if we don't understand some basic details. Exactly what we're asking. Well, I mean, there's things we should know right now we don't know. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to take a substitute motion to defer this until we get moving on the energy study.
I'll clarify that. We need some answers from the energy audit, right? Not just get moving.
Right. Right, sorry, sorry. Until we get answers on the energy audit.
Okay. I'll second the substitute motion. Further discussion on either one of those motions. I don't have any. Commissioner Cruz?
Can we have a date as to when we're going to rediscuss this?
I'll work with the manager. I don't, I can't give you a date now.
So you'll have, you'll put this on your calendar for January to discuss that with the manager? Can you be more specific so that we know the timeframe?
I can't be more specific right now. I don't know. I don't, I don't know what the manager's timeline is. I just want to defer it until we get that study.
Well, I'd like to make a substitute to the substitute motion to solicit proposals.
I'll second that. Thank you. We have a substitute to the substitute motion. So far, I haven't said anything, okay? And I think that I need to make a couple of comments on this. First of all, I appreciate the conversation has started. I think it's time for us to discuss something like this. I agree with, a lot of the comments were made. This is a business decision. As a business decision, we're asked right now to spend, by the time we add fence and anything else that we don't know about, close to $300,000 of taxpayers' money. Where is this $300,000 going to come from? This $300,000 is going to come from property tax, probably the most hated tax that we have for Sedgwick County citizens. I believe that an energy audit is the right thing to do, and I believe that we need to make, ask our staff to conduct an energy audit. We need to look at what's going to happen, and I agree, we've talked about things that go to the next 50 years. This is something that we need to look at to find out what is our best bang for the buck. Where is the return on investment for anything that we're going to do? This return on investment is 20 years down the line. I just heard that we're already paying for electricity, so we're saving immediately. No, that is not the right answer. We are paying for it immediately, and we return in the next 20 years is when we finally see a return on investment. And at the end of 20 years, who knows what kind of condition that those things are going to be in, and whether or not that at that point in time, we're going to continue to have one. That's just to break even. That's just to pay for them. That's not to save a nickel on what we're doing. I believe we need to do things that are green, and things like making sure that we're insulated right, that we're turning off lights when they need to be, we're adding LED lights, there's all these different things. We need to look at those. Those are important things. I heard today that the speed of government is real slow. Well, in this case, you're trying to say the speed of government needs to be real fast, because we just started talking about this in November, and suddenly it's on our calendar today. We're going to make a decision on it? Wow, that sounds like we're doing pretty fast, and we're only looking at one aspect of what we can do to be green. We need to look at everything that we can do to be green. It's important. I agree that we need to find out ways that we can be green. I heard that we need to be on track to start moving forward. I agree, we need to be on track to start moving forward, but we need to be on the right track as we're moving forward. And I don't know that we're on the right track to move forward with choosing one option, spending close to 300,000... spending close to $300,000 of property tax funds on a subject that we have not vetted to the extent that needs to be vetted. Speed of government is important because it does move slow. It moves slow for a reason, so that we can make wise, intelligent decisions on how that we spend taxpayers' money. So for that, we've got a substitute to the substitute motion. I will not be supporting the substitute to the substitute motion. I will be supporting the substitute motion as it goes forward. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also am going to support the deferral of this. And the reason why is because I think we all, what I've heard from all commissioners so far, seems like everybody agrees that having an energy audit makes sense. Sounds like that's got support today. I will be glad to support the idea of solar if that's what makes sense, but I don't want to spend money running staff through a whole bunch of hoops to present something to us that we're not going to, not going to support once the energy audit is done. I think we need to understand what the cost of the, to go to the next step is. We haven't heard that yet. I still have questions that haven't been answered. I'm willing to, I'm willing to support solar absolutely when the time is right. I'm not sure that we, again, we can do this again two months from now, or three months from now. When we have answers to the questions, we can certainly do this at any time. There's no time deadline to do this today. But I do think the next obvious, I mean, to me, the obvious next step is to understand where are we using energy and try to get our handle, get a handle on that first. And so I support the idea of getting data on solar, but I think we have questions we can answer today before we start spending money to run our staff through a bunch of hoops. And so I'll support the deferral. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Meister.
I just want to clarify, so the most recent motion, the substitute to the substitute, I think you said, to motion to solicit proposals?
Mm-hmm.
And that's what I seconded. That's not moving CIP money. She made a motion to solicit proposals, which we could issue to solicit proposals, and we would have so many answers that all have been brought up right now. And then if we need to, if we like it, we can consider it in the budget process next year, I mean, for the coming year. If we don't ask for proposals and information and do our own research, I just, that's why I seconded this motion, and I don't think it's relative to the moving of the CIP money, which was the first recommendation. Am I correct in my assumption?
Let me just clarify, and we talked about this a little bit yesterday. We cannot put an RFP out without a designated funding source. It's against policy. We could put an RFI out, request for information, which, the problem with RFI is it gives you generalities, and I think what I heard the commission say yesterday is, we want to begin to pinpoint dollars and cents and total costs on this. So we could put RFI out without any funding source necessary, but for RFP, you guys have to give us permission to have money.
All right, I stand corrected. So thanks for clarifying.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. If Commissioner Cruz would like to amend her motion and ask to go out for a request for information, I'd be supportive of that because that's part of what this audit that we've been discussing is going to be, is we're going to be looking for information. So I would be happy to support that motion for you if that's what we're doing, but we need a holistic audit to see where this fits in. And that is part of looking for information, and I hope we can do that. And part of soliciting information is also going to be soliciting to see if we have windows and doors and toilets and sinks and HVAC units that need work or are energy inefficient. That's the information that I'm looking for so we know how to move forward because, like Commissioner Dennis said, this is taking $2019 to $2020 and getting a return on investment in a decade or further. We need to see if we can be more energy efficient today, and that's part of this information that I personally am looking for. So if that's your motion, if you amend your motion, I'll be happy to support that.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to request information. Thank you for the clarification. I also just want to, I think it's important that we understand they don't have to be mutually exclusive. I think that when we talk about the payback on this, we are going to be making money right away. Like, it's going to start paying itself back, right? So we might not be, I mean, according to the numbers here. So we're not going to make it all back in one chunk, but it's going to pay for itself. So it's not like, yes, we are spending money, but then it's going to pay for itself. So the thought that we aren't going to make money right away, I would have to respectfully disagree. Right.
Break even is 15, 20 years.
Yes. So, yes, I'd like to amend my motion.
Commissioner, I think you can withdraw your substitute to the substitute requesting to be sent out for proposals and make a new motion, new substitute to the substitute to go out for a request for information.
This is getting complicated. Okay, so I'm going to withdraw my substitute to the substitute. I'm going to make and amend my first motion, correct?
Yeah, you'll be making a new substitute to a substitute motion.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. So I would like to make a new substitute to the substitute motion requesting information.
Yeah, to go out for a request.
To go out to request for information.
Second. But I need clarification on that because, I'm sorry, but I need to know what we're going to ask for. Are we going to ask for information about an energy audit? Or are we going to ask for information about solar panels? I don't know what we're asking for.
Let me make two recommendations based on what I'm hearing from the body. There is an interest in an energy audit. Part of the RFI could be to get information on the holistic, comprehensive audit, and a component of that study would be the solar panel portion of that. We could do an RFI for that. We've also, what we're talking about today is a year use of money in year-end transfer. If the commission would prefer, we could do year-end transfer and designate that money for RFP for energy analysis, part of which could be solar panel, and we could get this thing into gear potentially faster because if we don't, next year, to do an energy audit is going to cost money. We need to figure out what that's going to be and where that money is going to come from, and we'd push that through the budget process. We could move faster if you designate year-end transfer now, and I want Lindsey to come to the podium here and correct anything I'm going to say wrong, but if we designate the money and push it over now, we could use that money potentially to RFP, both of these projects, bring it back to you for a decision and a way forward.
Ms. Lindsey, you want to state your name for the record?
I would love to. Lindsey Paurusso, your CFO. So we will actually have kind of a two-part proposal with this. The year-end transfer, that actual transfer of cash would occur on January 15. That's when we propose to bring that specific action to you. And that could be designated to be used for this project, or it could be designated for any other CIP purpose or toward a future results of energy audit. Today's proposal is to establish this CIP project and to authorize budget authority because what that then allows is for the RFP process to begin. And so with the proposal today, I think if we do an RFI, we can simply go out and find out what solar panels are, would cost, and then we could also do a separate RFI to find out what the cost of an energy audit would be, and potentially some options depending on the scope and scale that you all want, if you want every facility, or if you want some that spend a certain amount of money or something like that.
Good. Well, a couple of questions for you real quick. I need to know when the best time is to spend money, if we're going to spend money. Is the 2019 budget, which we've got, what, 12 or 15 days left in, a good time to spend it? Because we passed that budget in August of 2018, and we've already spent millions of dollars that we didn't budget in 2019. So I need to know where we're at money-wise before I can tell you that I'd agree with something like that.
Sure. So in the third quarter forecast that was prepared back in October, we actually had included about $200,000 for solar panels, based on discussion at the time and the fact that the CIP committee had recommended it. So the year-end projections of a surplus of roughly $700,000 did include this spending. Now, because we do have a surplus projected for 2019, whether the funds are specifically earmarked for this or just generally toward implementation of energy recommendations down the road, I think it's probably a good use of 2019 money because we do know that in your 2020 budget, we are projecting a much smaller surplus. And certainly, since we haven't started that year, I don't know that I would want to recommend to you that you spend any money now without seeing a little bit more about what happens with the economy, particularly with news that has come out this week, and, you know, potential threats of recession and those kinds of things. So if we're going to do it, I think 2019 is the time to do it.
Very good. And, Mr. Manager, are you clear that if we approve this, that it is for a total overall view of energy? It's not focused solely on one aspect of energy?
Yes. And I want to make sure that while Lindsey's at the podium yet, that that is, what's on the agenda today, if we choose to move this money, that we can have the ability then to use that money to get RFP for total energy analysis.
So, right. So what may be a good option today would be to approve a CIP project for energy savings, make it a little more generic, and then as results come in from either an RFP or RFI, depending on which direction you go. Again, if you commit money, we can do an RFP and actually move forward with a proposal. Or we can commit the money and say, you all want to do an RFI, and get a global perspective, and then just apply this money toward those recommendations potentially in a later CIP proposal.
So I think that the majority of the commission wants to have more information before they make a decision so we can make a very wise decision. So I don't know that we want to commit to an RFP. We want information so that we can make a wise decision.
So I think based on what I'm hearing, what I would recommend today is that you go ahead and authorize a CIP project for energy savings, and that we would follow up with a year-end transfer in January to actually commit the cash toward that. And then what we could also do is follow that up with an RFI, which would include energy savings, and we can be specific to request information on solar panels and that. That way, there is no commitment of funds to that project, but allows us to move toward that and to earmark those funds this year.
Very good. Well, Lindsey, we appreciate your advice. We always appreciate your advice. Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
No, it's okay.
Commissioner Cruz.
So again, we're just authorizing to have this chunk of money be set aside. We're not saying we're going to spend it.
Correct.
We're just saying that it's going to be set aside. I'm excited that we are talking about the energy audit as a whole. I do absolutely believe that that is necessary. So if that's something that we can all agree to today, just understanding that we aren't spending the money today, we're just setting it aside so that we're following protocol, right? Okay.
Very good. All right. I don't see any other comments, believe it or not.
Mr. Chairman, just for my clarification, we currently have a substitute for a substitute to do an RFI, request for information.
Oh, we need to clarify our motion then.
Yeah, then she may have to withdraw that if we're going to amend that to approve a CIP, yeah, CIP audit for energy savings.
Okay, so I will withdraw that, and I will make another motion stating that we would do, we would.
We want to transfer the money for CIP.
Correct, yes. I would like to approve a CIP amendment for an energy audit.
And that's your substitute for a CIP.
And do an RFI, yes. That is my substitute to the substitute.
All right. Are you happy, Mr. Papoun?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Are you happy, Lindsey?
I'm happy.
All right. We have a motion and a second to a substitute to a substitute. Is everybody clear on what this motion is?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meister?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you all for working through that. I appreciate it. I think that's good government. All right. It is 11:05.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's still a substitute motion to table the original.
I thought the substitute to the substitute overrode all the previous motions.
It should, but I'll withdraw if you want me to. If you're more comfortable, Mr. President.
Well, I just want to make sure the earlier motions have been addressed. Because the original, I mean, the original action, the original motion was to approve a CIP amendment for installation of solar panels.
Right.
Which we are, my understanding, the substitute motion was to defer that action.
Yes.
So if the board wants to defer that action, I think you need to address.
Would you like to withdraw your motion?
Yeah. I think you need to address that, or then we go back to the original item, which was the amendment for installation of solar panels.
Oh, well, yeah, we're not ready. Okay, yeah, then we'll keep, I guess, we'll continue to vote on my motion then.
Would you like to withdraw your motion?
No, not if, we still need to because.
If it's the will of the board to defer item C, I think you need to go with the substitute motion.
Oh, I'm starting to understand what you're saying. Okay, I'm sorry. You're smarter than I am. Thank you. I understand why that we need to withdraw the original one because it's really being overridden by the other one, but we still have something on.
Right. We still have the underlying motions and substitute.
So we need to move that out.
Right.
Or we can just vote against the original motion.
You could do either one, but.
Let's just defer and one. Okay. We have a substitute motion to defer because it's being overridden by our other motion to have a CIP audit, or a CIP for energy savings. Madam Clerk, call a roll for the substitute motion.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meister?
No.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Okay, now, Mr. Papoun, are we okay?
You're okay because the substitute motion addressed item C.
You just cut into your break. I want to let you know, we're going to take a short recess until 11:15, so it's a short recess.
Okay, so how do we defer it? Yes.
But the motion, but we did make a motion to.
The CIP audit, or CIP energy savings is going to move forward. That money is being moved.
Okay.
So how do we defer it? That's what I didn't.
We do see growth in some of these municipalities, including down south toward Clearwater. And finally, the 2019 developmental trend summary report just out from MAPD recently kind of shows what that growth has been. Some areas it's very minimal, but there has been minimal population growth. And there are other documents that exist, or there are other pages that exist in that document that show the type of development that has occurred. But we do see some minimal growth in most areas around the county. So this request for, from Clearwater, for us to station an ambulance in their city, in their city proper, as opposed to responding from existing posts that we currently have. We looked at their call volumes for the past four years, basically sixteen through nineteen. It appears, based on the data that we're able to analyze, that there's been a slight downward trend in the number of calls total. If you look at 2019 through twelve seventeen of nineteen, for the first half of the year, Clearwater was still in operation. They still made most of their calls themselves. We were there to back up and supplement as needed, but they ultimately make, made eighty one, eighty-four out of one hundred and seventy-one calls. Their average response time with their volunteer group was about nine minutes and twenty-four seconds. And the ninetieth percentile showed that at least ninety percent of the time, their response time was fourteen minutes or less. For Sedgwick County EMS, making calls into Clearwater, this is Clearwater proper. This is not the township. For us responding into the city, we made eighty-seven calls. Our average response time was eighteen minutes over the course of those eighty-seven calls. And our ninetieth percentile response capability was in twenty-two minutes or less, ninety percent of the time. EMS has a standard that they've touted in their documentation and in their performance measures for several years, where they strive to have a minimum response time to all areas of the county of eleven minutes or less. Those eighty-seven calls that are greater than that would have some minimal impact on that overall number, considering that we make sixty-five thousand calls, but that's one consideration. So looking at Clearwater's peak times for service, if we staffed a single twelve-hour unit seven days a week, we would be looking for the optimal time for them to be utilized down there, the time that most calls occur. And analysis showed that sixty-five percent of the time, or sixty-five percent of the calls are between eight AM and eight PM. This type of temporal analysis stays pretty consistent for public safety-type responses and calls. Looking at EMS data, looking at law enforcement data, and looking at emergency communications data, you usually see a very similar trend, somewhere between seven AM and nine PM is when those occur, and then it slopes off either side. But at least for this timeframe that we looked at them, it was eight to eight. So with that basic information, ultimately, the current ask from Clearwater and the conversations that were had were that twenty-four, seven probably was not at all doable. Twelve hours a day, seven days a week was the less costly of the two, if there was a will on the part of the commission to do so. And the cost for the first year for us to put a twelve-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week, seven-day-a-week resource in Clearwater proper is three hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. That accounts for salaries for four person, for new personnel, the annual cost of maintaining, fueling, and setting aside dollars toward a future replacement of an ambulance at about forty-nine thousand dollars. A one-time setup of county computers, networked county computers in the facility that they would allow us to use, has been estimated by IT at a cost of about nineteen thousand dollars. Uniform, six thousand. So again, the total comes to three seventy-six, two ninety-two for year one, with a annual recurring of about three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred dollars, which will be adjusted up for price indexing or cost of living or cost of living raises for our employees. As part of that, negotiations have not been completed. It would depend, be dependent upon whether the commission votes in favor of doing this or not. But ultimately, there was kind of discussion and conversation that they would allow us, if we did that, to utilize the public safety building that they have in Clearwater, where the ambulances are currently stored, generally at no cost. Any modifications that we made or computer equipment would be at the cost of the county, but there would be no lease or rent necessarily. And then same thing with the ambulance. We could utilize their ambulance, which is a 2013 model with low mileage. We could utilize that at no cost, but we would maintain it. They would retain possession of it. And those have kind of been tentative conversations that are not solidified at all at this time. So those are the basic, that's the basic overview of the information. At this point, it would be at your discretion whether or not you authorize the transfer of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars from public safety contingency to the EMS general fund, and simultaneously approve the addition of four full-time staff to the staffing tables. So with that, I will stand for questions and try to answer your questions if you have any.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you very much, Rusty. I think you gave a very good synopsis of what's been happening over the last year. I know Mayor Ashery and City Administrator Ron Marsh are here. I don't know if either of you would like to speak at this point or not. Okay, you're to answer questions. But anyway, thank you for that. I have attended three different meetings in Clearwater. One was a council meeting, and then we had a, Sedgwick County EMS had a meeting down there once, and then I know their volunteer department had a meeting down there. Looking at the map, we can see there is a huge void in southwest Sedgwick County of an EMS station. And I think we came up with a good compromise, and I appreciated, this was brought up during the budget cycle. I appreciated the commission's support. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Rusty, but that was discussed during the budget cycle, right? Back in August?
There was discussion, general discussion, that there was going to be dollars earmarked or set aside in public safety contingency for this consideration at a later time. There was not a public hearing or...
Because we felt that would, this would happen, this would occur, that we would need to step in and provide service.
It was requested and management, management through the budget process, set aside dollars in contingency to be brought back to the commission for consideration.
Yes, yes. And I remember those meetings, and I think Chairman Dennis said in at least one of them, or we talked right after one of them with it. So I appreciate that, and I know the thousands of citizens in Clearwater and the surrounding area and townships and even Viola really appreciate the consideration of the commission. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the presentation, and thank you, Mayor, for being here managing Clearwater. I want to be clear. My support for these, for the money set aside in the budget for this was so we would have time to consider and potentially make a decision today to do this or not to do this. Depends on what makes sense. And so this is, that was not necessarily a pledge of support for this project. So I think we have the right today to analyze this and make sure this makes sense. But I'm looking at the map right now of Sedgwick County, and I'm seeing a large void, basically. Well, I'll just say this. We have a station in Mays and a station in Valley Center, one in Goddard, one out by Lake Afton. That's kind of represents the western half of our county. There's a lot of areas out there that don't have EMS support nearby, but I, I guess I'd ask you a question. We typically don't let these ambulances sit in the post and sit static. We move them around where the call volume is anticipated to be, based on very extensive algorithms that tell us where to pre-stage these ambulances. Is that about right?
That's correct. We have, we have a software program that helps our field supervisors make the determination as to where ambulances need to be moved, so that they're ready, based on call volumes and the shifting of ambulances.
So if we did this today, this ambulance would not be sitting in the Clearwater station. It probably would be, my guess is, probably someplace a little closer to where we anticipate the next call, which probably would be somewhere closer to Wichita, most likely. Is that reasonable?
If the commission approved this, it would be, it would be important that EMS leadership and supervision have the ability to utilize this unit within the deployment model that exists, so that as call volumes change and shift, they can utilize the resources available, pull them to where they're needed. And as, as call volume slopes off, then they can return more back toward their point of origin. But as it is today, they do have a deployment model that allows them to move those resources as needed to fill voids in the system, based on call volume and need.
Okay. With all, with all respect, I would, I would comment that there are numerous public safety posts throughout our county that are volunteer. I don't, some of them, I assume, are actually manned with people sitting there waiting for the call, and sometimes not. Maybe they're at home, and they receive a call and have to respond from there. What's the situation with Clearwater's voluntary, volunteer EMS post before? Were they stationed at the site, or were they called in when needed?
I would defer to, yeah, I would defer to Clearwater and let them answer that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I should have recognized you earlier. We always try and recognize our elected officials.
Burt Ashery, Mayor, Clearwater. A couple things if I can address that. We have had, over the last several years, a all-volunteer force that has always been called from home or wherever they're at for the EMS side. And problematically, what has started happening is volunteers are harder and harder to get. And from a ground transport transportation situation, that's what the state got involved. So from this perspective, we had no one sitting at our building waiting for the next call to come in. They were always at work, whatever, and would respond to the call nine-one-one as it came in, if that answers your specific question. Since this change, we still maintain a volunteer force that does not transport. And if available, and we've been very clear to our community to make that determination, they still respond and will provide onsite first aid, whatever level of the training of the person that shows up can, until the ambulance is dispatched. If that onsite person determines no ambulance is necessary, they still can call them off in today's model. The understanding that we have and we have communicated to our community is exactly the model that was just explained, is that although this resource would be stationed in Clearwater, it would be part of the county's overall resources to be used where necessary. But as the response times were just articulated, what we're hoping to do from the city of Clearwater and the county community surrounding it, our school district houses about five thousand or so. The city's about twenty-five hundred. So it is a large metropolitan area, as far as response goes in that geographic area, is that it would start there, be there when a resource allowed it to be, but we understand it would leave.
Thank, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that answer. And since I have you at the podium, would you please also talk about the fire station seventy-one that's also there? What, is that a volunteer department?
It is. It's one-hundred percent volunteer, same thing. We have all-volunteer force there to include the leadership and the firefighters, and they respond at a nine-one-one call.
And, and are they, are they, are they there at the station waiting for a call, or they called in when, when the time?
They are not there waiting. They are called at the time of the call.
Are your volunteer firefighters, are they also EMT?
We're working toward that. Some of them are. We're working toward that, and perhaps even our police department having first aid capabilities.
You may not be able to speak to this, but I notice that Viola, your neighboring city there, also has a fire station, number sixty-five. Do we, do you ever receive support from them in terms of some type of a, an aid agreement that you might have with Viola?
Please state your name for the record.
Ron Marsh, City Administrator for Clearwater. And Commissioner, yes, we have mutual aid agreement with Viola, so we, we support them, and they support us.
Okay. So, and they also have EMT firefighters, I assume?
I don't know what their level of staffing is, but I'm sure they have some, yes.
And, and just one more question for you both. Again, thank you for coming to the podium and providing answers. Do you have data on the response times of, so when a call comes in in the Clearwater area, and you guys respond with a fire or with, or with your volunteer ambulance? What's the response times? Do you have data to, to show, to show, basically? I mean, I would assume if it's a volunteer department, and they've got to go from wherever they are to the station, get the equipment probably, then respond, if that's what they're going, if it's a fire or a, or a, they anticipate the need of an ambulance, they're going to have to go to the station first, get the equipment, and then respond. So the response time may have some delays because of that. Do we have response times captured? Do we know what that data looks like over time?
Well, I'll just echo what was reported earlier. I think what we have in our historical data is about eight minutes. So from the time the call comes in until we're responding.
That's your, that's your fifty?
From our previous, when we had our ambulance.
Okay. So it's pretty fast. I mean, for someone to respond and go get the equipment, that's pretty fast.
That's correct.
Okay.
But we cannot sustain that, obviously.
Yeah, I understand. All right. Well, thank you for those, thank you for those answers. I have a question for Rusty. Thank you. Rusty, let me ask a question. So I'm looking at the map. I think we've known for a long time, we probably have some EMS needs out in western Sedgwick County, but, and I think we've known that and talked about this off and on, since I've been a commissioner, going on for five years now. So my question is, I'm looking at roughly forty fire stations and, I guess, eighteen EMS posts throughout the county. Our system of care uses both firefighters who are certified EMTs as well as ambulances. And so do we count the response times of firefighters in? When we, you talk about the response times on the sheet you just presented here, that's just the ambulance.
That's just the ambulance.
Is there fire trucks also, or EMTs are responding that may be different times that you showed here that are probably better? Because again, there's forty fire stations.
Yes, sir. Yeah, there's, generally, it depends on the type of call. Through the emergency dispatching, medical dispatching, they've set up dispatching protocols, and they categorize calls based on the type of medical need that there is. Some of those calls, the only dispatched resource is a fire medic unit. Some of those, it's only the ambulance, and sometimes it's a first response. Fire is dispatched as a medical first responder, and the ambulance is also dispatched because they anticipate that it's a high probability of a transport or a more life-threatening medical condition that's going to require the advanced life support and the transport. So, yes, our system requires both. So there are, there are going to be response times for fire dispatched on medicals, and then there's going to be the response time for the ambulance from the time they were dispatched until they arrive.
And if firefighters do things like clear airways, stop bleeding as best they possibly can, administer CPR, those types of things, which are all life-saving, the paramedics, of course, can do additional things as well, but that's basically the types of things that they would...
That's the model that we have in this, in this county, is medical first response by fire to provide life-sustaining support until a transport unit can arrive to take over and transport.
So I do want the community to understand, we have a system of care that includes firefighters.
Yes.
And it's really important to understand that, because if we forget that they're out there, we're eliminating basically two-thirds of our system, and that's a major point in terms of public safety. They provided a lot of care. Again, I love our EMS folks, but I do want to recognize our firefighters that are EMT providers, and there are many and many of them. Most of these stations have five members, twenty-four, seven. And so there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of resource available with respect to firefighters. The posts that are in Hayesville, there's a, there's a fire station and EMS station in Hayesville. There's a, one of each in Goddard. We also have EMS out by Lake Afton. Can we talk about those three locations? Are those twenty-four, seven locations, or do you know?
The post out at Lake Afton, two hundred and sixty-third Street West, is a twelve-hour, seven-day-a-week ambulance. I believe that Goddard and Hayesville are both twenty-four-hour ambulance service. I'll have to verify that, but I believe they both are twenty-four-hour staffed.
Well, looking, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Looking at the map, I think our response times are just based on, on distance. It looks to me like we have a lot of people who are living, who live much further than Clearwater from, from brick-and-mortar stations. And again, that doesn't mean that the equipment's stationed right there. I'm just talking about geography on the map. We have a lot of part of the county that would actually be further than Clearwater from a brick-and-mortar station. So I guess my question would be, when I first became a commissioner, one of the things I was, I was, it was drilled into me by, by many people, Director Hadley for one. We pick station locations based on data, statistical data, call volume, population. Those are major data points that are taken into account. If we wanted to put a station in western Sedgwick County somewhere, thinking that it deserves to have some, some additional post, but somewhere, have we gone through that data to look at, to find out where the, where that, the greatest number of people would be, would be served by another, another location?
The data needs to be refreshed. Tentatively, there were, there was a, there is a CIP submission that's been, been in existence for a couple of years, and current EMS leadership has been reevaluating. But their analysis, their initial analysis was somewhere in western Wichita, based on call volumes and all of those indicators. Currently, they're refreshing that research in anticipation of updating CIP requests for 2021, for the budget cycle of 2021. So that's the best I can tell you right now.
Let me, let me be clear. I support public safety as a number-one priority of Sedgwick County. I think that we have to do that from, from government. That public safety trumps everything else. Having said that, I'm willing to support additional EMS resources, if that, if the data says we need to do that. That's, I'd be, I'd support that. I would like to approach this from a data perspective. Otherwise, an engineer would say, how does this, you know, where's the, where do you put the station to get the biggest bang for the buck? There, I happen to notice, there's numerous cities in Sedgwick, in Sedgwick County that have populations that are a little bit smaller than Clearwater, but they're, they're not, but they're, you know, together, they're accustomed to a large number of people, and the resources are further from, from those populations. And so I, I'm very, I want to be very careful to make sure we do this in a data-driven way. And I'd like us to go through the process of actually looking at data to find out if we were going to invest in another EMS post. Number one, is it needed? Number two, and I think it is, probably, and number two, where would it go based on data? And I think we ought to have that data before we pick a location. And in terms of this exact proposal, I appreciate the, the use of the ambulance. Obviously, that becomes a county responsibility. When it's worn out, we're going to have to replace it. And I don't, I've not looked at the station, but it doesn't seem to fit the same kind of amenities necessarily that our other stations have. So I'd like to maybe look at that, to make sure that we're putting employees in a place that, that is commensurate with the other stations that we, we use. And if, if not, we may, we may be talking about potentially, you know, changing some things to make the employees feel like they have the same type of facilities that they have in other locations. And so I think there's going to be other, other costs potentially, and I'd like to guess maybe have a, you know, maybe a, some analysis as to what happens when the ambulance wears out. What are the costs per year, regardless of the startup cost today? What are the costs per year to have this station? I'd like to have that. All right. Thank you. I'll stop talking.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe I, Rusty, if I can take the last twenty minutes and try to turn it into about a minute and a half. We talked about this a little bit yesterday, and so what I see here is three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar budget commitment into a twenty-one million dollar annual budget overall.
Yes, sir.
So that's a small fraction of, of that. And I also see two hundred calls a year into sixty-five thousand calls overall.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But we're proving today, four people, twelve-hour shifts, four out of just a hundred and forty-five staff, which is a sizable increase commitment compared to the budget numbers and the actual calls. So I, and I appreciate the, the location of the, the building and the dollar a year. Those kind of things are great, fantastic. So I guess to you, I, and I just learned recently that, that the commission, I guess, does make actual decisions about personnel in a department, which I would rather trust the department more than, I don't like to micromanage, as I expressed yesterday. So my question is, is, and Mayor Burt, you referenced this, does your community understand that if these people clock in at this facility, it just, it's data-driven by, hey, we're, they could have a shift that maybe they're not even there at all? And that's not a problem for your community, where they'll come back to the commissioner and say, hey, we went by there, and we didn't see a truck, we didn't see a people, so what's going on? And then we get back, we get pushed, blowback saying, hey, you're not, you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing.
Would you like me to drop that?
Could you please? And Mayor, Mayor, I have a lot of trust in you. You know, me and you've worked together on some projects, and I always appreciate your, your level-headedness.
I think the citizens of Clearwater and the surrounding citizens of Clearwater would feel very comfortable with seven-twenty-four if it was there. I think that we, as we have communicated this, that we would have the seven-twelve, seven days a week. We have had multiple conversations privately, openly, and continuously that that resource is a county resource and would be pulled away as needed. There are those that have voiced and continue to voice, that means they would never be there. I think what the community is hoping for, and what I'm hoping for, from a safety perspective, is there's a balance. I understand that there's peak times that it's not going to be there, but I also understand that waiting twenty-one minutes for a ambulance, if we have a resource onsite already doing first aid, is not going to be an issue. Our volunteers are not guaranteed. I think that we could see times in which that ambulance is the onsite resource, and we're going to continue to fight for an onsite the best we can in that part of the county to have that resource available. So, yes, the community has been made aware that the resource would be used as a county resource, and I think that there's, there's going to be those that understand that. If somebody drove by and saw no ambulance sitting there, would they put something on our fantastic Facebook site that says they're not doing their job? I would anticipate someone would do that. But I think, again, as the comment's been made, it's going to be in every situation, how do we respond from an emergency perspective, both the city and the county, and did it meet our medical needs? So I, I'm not going to dispute the need of this resource to be wider than just the geographic area it's going to, but I would also support having it there is going to find times in which it paid the benefit to have it there.
Right. I would agree. Okay. So it sounds like there's been efforts and, and maybe continued efforts if we have this kind of pushback. I just don't want to box us in, and I sure don't want to box EMS in, that I don't really understand all the data that drives what, how it's dispatched. Final question to Rusty. I didn't realize that there's a state board of EMS requirement. I'm sorry, that's new to me.
Yes, sir.
So they come in and just audit all over the place?
EMS is licensed by the state of Kansas, by the state board, and, yes, they come in and conduct audits on the operations and making sure that EMS is compliant with the requirements of the regulations, the administrative regulations that the, that the state board establishes, as well as the statutes that regulate that, or allow that board to operate and give guidance for their regulations. So there is a state board that regulates EMS transport operations. Now, when you're talking EMTs and paramedics attached to fire departments, since they're not ground transport, since they're not transporting patients, they still are licensed by the state and overseen by our medical director, but they aren't, they aren't regulated the way that ambulance service is by the state board, yet.
So this state board that has, sounds like it's got some authority, they're, they're okay with this kind of plan? I assume that's always, that's been vetted?
Yeah, they're aware that we entered into an MOU with Clearwater on, at the request or requirement of the state, and the state understands that we provide, we're the exclusive provider of ambulance service in Sedgwick County.
Okay.
So this has no impact.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Rusty, for clarifying.
Sure.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Meitzner. I want to clarify one thing that Commissioner Meitzner brought up. Not only are we certified by the state, but we are one of just a handful of major EMS organizations that are nationally certified. Is that not correct?
Correct. Yes. We just recently went through the accreditation process again, and we had onsite auditors from the accreditation agency here just a few weeks ago, so...
But we are one of a very few that are nationally certified.
I think we're one of two in the state of Kansas, perhaps, and there's a few hundred, yeah, there's not that many across the nation.
I take every opportunity to congratulate our, our staff countywide, but I want to make sure that I take this opportunity to congratulate our EMS also.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to relay to the commission that hearing from citizens in Clearwater, obviously they are passionate about this issue. There's nothing more important that we do as a county, in my opinion, than being the first responders. Public safety is our number-one goal. It's our number-one priority. Getting to someone when they are having a medical issue is even more important than getting to a home than when it's on fire. So it's, it's highly critical that we have this. I'm afraid that it would stunt Clearwater... I'm afraid that it would stunt Clearwater's future growth if they did not have ambulatory services there. It's a city that's on the move. They will be growing. They have some economic development projects coming through the pipeline that we've been working with. There's just a lot of factors of why this makes sense. The 12-on-12 made sense for the station number, the one by Lake Gaffin, which would be number 17. I, I just would encourage my colleagues to support this, and like I said, I know the citizens of Clearwater would be extremely grateful, and I would make a motion that we approve this EMS staffing table for the city of, or just not for the city of Clearwater, it obviously goes a lot further than that. But I just move that we approve the budget authority from the safety contingency to EMS general fund.
I haven't gotten, hadn't my questions answered or answered.
Oh, sorry. I was sorry, okay.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. If we, if we were to, to approve this and give four additional staffing members to EMS, is this where they would put them?
Currently EMS leadership, you know, we transitioned late August, and people have been promoted into leadership roles there. For the, so for about the past 60 to 90 days, they have been working diligently as a leadership team and working with their staff from the, from the streets up to evaluate departmental needs. They have not, they're, they're very close to being finished with that. They're still going through the data that they received back, the information and input they received back from staff at the, at the street level relative to a, a proposal that they, they put forward to give, to start talking points. So they will be coming forward fairly soon with an analysis of departmental needs that we will need to look at and review. And at that point, they probably will have some, ask for some positions, and we'll have to see what, you know, how they propose, propose to use those positions. So what I can tell you right now is, they've been analyzing this, they're going to come forward and say, here's what we believe our needs are, and here's how we would utilize them, and we have not seen the final product on that yet. So I can't really answer that question.
Okay. Because that's, obviously, public safety is very important, and I am a huge supporter of that. I just wonder, you know, if we're going to give extra positions to a department and then tell them where to put their positions, to me, I'm kind of like Commissioner Meitzner, and I, I don't want to tell them what to do. I mean, if we, if we think that this is going to benefit our, our county, and it's going to help Clearwater, I, I am all in favor of it, but telling them where to put the folks without figuring that out, is that the best use of these four positions for the whole county? That's, that's what I would like to know. Where would, you know, if they were coming to us and asking for eight positions, I would ask the same question.
Sure.
So I think it's important for us to understand where they should go, and when are they going to be done with that?
I suspect they'll be done in the early part of January, at least to come back to myself and then through the manager and the leadership team with the proposal to look at for, for budget cycle.
So if we were to approve this today, could we discuss that they, they would have the option to put these four additional people wherever they need to be? If it would, if it would service Clearwater, too? I mean, I don't want to leave Clearwater high and dry, but I also want to make sure that we're utilizing these people in the best manner possible.
Sure.
Hey, but I've got some questions.
Okay.
First of all, I love our EMS folks, I've said it numerous times, but right now, I'm worried about them. How much overtime do we pay a year for EMS right now?
I think we were slated this year somewhere in the $800,000 range, roughly, in overtime, and that comes from.
Close to a million dollars overtime. So we're working our folks awful hard, I think. Brings me to the question, the way that, that this is worded, that we approve budget transfer authority from public safety to EMS of almost $400,000 and approve four more FTEs. Will those four FTEs help alleviate our overtime?
What these four FTE will do is add another ambulance and another post to staff and manage and maintain. It won't have any direct impact on filling vacancies when people call in sick or have family medical leave for a elderly parent or anything like that. This, this will add a brand-new resource, add a brand-new post and a brand-new ambulance that if somebody there calls in sick, then the already existing resources would have to be shuffled to try to fill there, or else we would leave an ambulance sitting idle.
So it could make our overtime more difficult than it is now?
If we filled, if we added a 20-second ambulance during peak time, which this would be kind of a peak-time ambulance, if we added a 20-second ambulance and we wanted to make sure that all 22 of those were running, and we had people that were on sick leave, injury leave, et cetera, then we would either be pulling people in in overtime status to fill those to make sure they were running, or else we would have certain units sitting unmanned for that shift, which, you know, could average one to two per day, is kind of where we're at right now. So this is adding a resource, it's not addressing those staffing issues that lead to overtime.
I'm worried about our EMS folks, and it appears to me that we're actually going to put more burden on our EMS folks, and our overtime's going to go up, and our work hours are going to go up. That's a concern, truly is. However, if I read this exactly word-for-word, which I already read to you, doesn't mean that they have to be there at, at Clearwater if this study comes out in January and says that we need to use these to help alleviate our overtime. This just tells me that we're going to transfer budget authority from public safety contingency to EMS general fund to, to provide four more FTEs. That's what the motion says. And so I don't have a problem with that, honestly, if we use it to solve our EMS problem. Because we have an EMS problem in Sedgwick County, in my opinion, when we've got almost a million dollars' worth of overtime, and our folks are being worked way beyond what I think they ought to be worked. So I would support the motion, but if it, and I want to be clear with you, Mayor, honestly, I want to support you, but if, if it hinders or if it damages my EMS, then I'm going to have a problem saying that they're going to always be down there in, in Clearwater. If, if our staff comes up and tells me that we need these four, or they come back and say we need eight or 10 in order to be able to alleviate the overtime and to make sure that we're not overworking our EMS folks, public safety is important, but taking care of our employees is absolutely critical, or, or public safety isn't going to happen. So I can support the motion. I just want everybody to be clear that I'm supporting adding four FTEs and moving some money. I'm not saying that they're going to be in Clearwater, okay?
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question. Do we have a, a number of open positions in our EMS department at this time?
As of today, we have 12 vacant positions that they are advertised and hiring for.
Do we, would we have a, a plan to when we think those will be filled?
The director believes that they will have those filled, he believes by mid-January is the goal, to have those all filled, and he, he's pretty confident that they can fill them with paramedics and/or EMTs.
Do you believe that the overtime we're seeing right now is a result of the vacant positions?
The overtime is, there's two factors here. One is we have 12 vacant positions currently that cause, it depends on what shift they're on, but it causes some staffing issues. The secondary part of that is the existing staff, if they all came to work on their regular shifts, would, would fill most all of those, those ambulances and those shifts, but we're all human. They have family needs, they have vacation needs, they have, you know, they get sick, their kids get sick, they have elderly parents that they have to take care of. And so whenever you factor in those normal staff time off, about 60% of the shortages comes from employees needing to take time off and not be there on the days they're supposed to, and the other 40% comes from open positions that we're in the process of trying to fill.
Thank you. I, I should know the answer to this already, but can you please remind me what the current authorized FTE numbers are for EMS?
The total number is right at 191. That would include administrative, as well as all of the ranks of staff that are, that are certified as EMTs and/or paramedics.
So the folks that are actually on the ambulances driving around the county, how many, how many of those FTEs are for that?
Currently in the budget, we have allocated about 145 EMTs, AEMTs, paramedics, lieutenants and captains, which are, lieutenants and captains are either EMTs or paramedics. So we have 145 of those people that would be generally boots on the ground, in the bus, responding to calls for, for service.
Let me just state once again, as I do when, when topics of EMS come up, I, I love the folks in EMS, I think they do a tremendous job, I have the highest respect for them, I think they are highly professional, and I, I think that they are excellent in what they do. I am, I am concerned about, you know, stretching them, stretching them thinner until we have our staffing tables filled with the folks we need for our existing obligations, okay? So I don't want to start staffing Clearwater immediately when, and it makes that problem actually worse. So I agree with the chairman on his comments on that. I, I'm reading the recommended motion here on the, on the backup material, and I don't know that's exactly what the motion was that I heard a minute ago. I, I would like to verify that what was moved was, in fact, what's written in front of me. Was, was the motion to do with the recommended action? Was there some other aspect to this?
Commissioner McPoon, County Counselor, I believe the motion was to approve the budget transfer in addition to the EMS staffing table.
Okay, so whether or not this impacts Clearwater or not, that's a future decision.
Right, but that, I don't know if the.
Can you read it back, please? The motion.
The recommended action?
Yeah.
The motion.
The motion that Commissioner O'Donnell made, hadn't received a second yet.
I believe he only motioned to approve the budget transfer.
Okay, so the issue of Clearwater is a, is a future decision still, if I understand correctly. This is not what this motion says here.
Currently, we have no written agreements with Clearwater. County Counselor had prepared one document, one facility use document for them to review, but no agreement's been reached or signed on the vehicle or the facility use. So at this point, we have no written agreements or commitments to Clearwater. This motion, the, the motion today is simply to move, allow the transfer of dollars from public safety contingency to the EMS budget, and to allow this, the addition of four FTE to the staffing table.
And they can be used anywhere that they're needed to be used?
If that's the will of the commission, yes.
I, until we see the, the agreements with the city of Clearwater, until we see some data to say we should post these folks in a certain spot, it says we ought to create a new station, if you will, a new brick-and-mortar station, I, I don't know we ought to necessarily, you know, earmark this for Clearwater specifically. I, I support EMS and support public safety, and I'm fine with the motion if that's what this is, but I, I think that if we're going to commit this to Clearwater, we need to have some data to, to prove that that's the right location for these folks. So I'd like to be supportive of the motion to the extent that it helps EMS, but I, I want to make sure we're very clear on earmarking that necessarily for Clearwater, when I think we have an entire half of a county that ought to be part of, part of this discussion. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner McPoon, County Counselor, again, Lindsey has pointed out to me, I think rightfully so, the motion also includes the additions to the staffing table.
Correct, we understand that. It's to move the money in, in the staffing table, but those could alleviate some of the overtime and the stress that's put on our, on our EMS right now. I don't want to put more stress on them.
Right. Commissioner Cruz.
So if we're talking additions to the staffing table, then we would not need the additional $25,000 for the one-time fee? I mean, if we're talking about adding people and positions, would that be a necessity? Because we're talking computers, connectivity, I mean, if we're talking that these four positions would be added to EMS, would that be necessary?
The $6,000 to purchase new uniforms for those four people, that's what that is, is outfitting them fully.
The $19,000.
The $19,000, if we are not moving into a new facility that needs computer setup, then that could be, I suppose, deferred. It would stay in public, public safety contingency and be available at a later date if that's the decision that was made, if the decision was made to.
We could approve that entire transfer, but it doesn't have to be expended if the decision is made to, to use some other vehicle in order to be able to, to support Clearwater. And by vehicle, I'm not talking about an ambulance.
There was originally, I think, $678,000 placed in public safety contingency on top of the normal public safety contingency amount to support a couple of potential initiatives this year, this being one, and the other being the integrated care team, if it was decided to create new FTE positions to support that, which at this point, that ask is not being made by, by the participants in that. They want to continue to pilot with resources they have for, for some more time, so this is 376 of 678,000, I believe, that was placed in contingency for these two things, just so you know.
Hey, I don't see other, any other comments. We have a motion, and I, yes.
This is now, from my understanding, and I don't disagree with everything that's been said about making sure the county's making the right decision to put the resources where necessary. I have, we have received, we have scheduled for our upcoming meeting, the agreement we're talking about to, the county has sent it to us, we have reviewed it, we've sent it back with our agreement, and that agreement, if we approve it on our upcoming council meeting, would give the county access to our building. I don't know that there's anything in that agreement, I'll go back and look, that says an effective date that you would have to house it, so that step may be appropriate regardless, depending on when this would happen. We have not received, although we've had discussions about a similar agreement, to use the ambulance, same thing. Doesn't necessarily mean that if we say you can, if you do, when that has to happen. I just want to make sure, from our perspective, that we don't lose sight of the fact that, I understand how the motion was written, I understand the intent you're taking it, but we came here with the understanding that it would be, and if that's going to be different once the decision's made, I, too, would be very interested, so I can go back and answer a timeframe in which you're talking for a decision to be made, because this does change in reality what we have been telling our community now for six months. So I just want to make sure that as this moves forward, I understand what the intent of the commission is. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that, and I don't know that this precludes that from happening, exactly what you hope to happen. I just need to make sure I'm protecting our EMS folks, too, and, and making sure that we're not overstressing our staff, so. Anyway, we have a motion, and as the motion's written, I can second that, so now we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Same, none, Madam Clerk, call her all.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, let's go back to item Delta, please call that item.
Item D, Legislative Platform 2020.
Mr. McPoon.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to present this morning a proposed 2020 Sedgwick County platform. It's been quite a saga, but I, and I won't repeat some of the things I did last week, going into the entire history and working with the manager's office on getting to this point, because I think we've already addressed that. What I will discuss is probably our, what process we might use this morning. I think at first, we might want to look at the priority issues, and I will show those in a second, and then look at adopting also a joint partner statement prior to looking at the second page of issues. The priority issues once again, first two, strengthen and enhance Medicaid Safety Net through enhanced rates for behavioral health, in support of 4% increase for behavioral health. The second priority, I've actually changed, and we discussed in the staff meeting yesterday, the language from last week, last Wednesday's meeting, now includes language that the regional state mental hospital facility include approximately 25 to 30 beds as recommended by the Mental Health Coalition. by the Mental Health Coalition. The third priority issue is to address the behavioral health needs of the uninsured and underinsured, and request eight point two million dollars as part of that platform issue. The fourth is to continue, of course, get the state's support for our Community Crisis Center funding. The fifth priority issue is a nuisance abatement authority that we've been trying to get from the legislature. I have tweaked that from last week to include the word judiciously as part of the process that we would use in using nuisance abatement authority, and it would be used judiciously because we don't have that many instances in the county where we would probably use this, and only after very careful consideration. And then the sixth one is to create, change the statutes to be able to create a charter commission that is specific to Cedric County. And then, last week, we didn't have the joint partners-
Mr. Papoon, why don't we stop there?
Okay.
Why don't we hold on for just a second there?
Absolutely.
And back up. I think that we've all argued items one through six in numerous staff meetings and board meetings. I think we've massaged each one of these to a great extent. At this point, I think that unless anyone has any objection, we take this one step at a time. We'll do that separately. So-
Sorry if I interrupted.
No problem. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve priority I issues one through six, because these are our priority issues.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. And now, because this next one is a statement, it's not really one of our issues, it's really a statement, that's why I wanted to break it out. I think it's important, we've been working with our partners to get this statement down, so if you'd like to brief that, that's the reason I broke it out, was just to make sure that everybody understood, it's really separate from our priority issues, although it touches on our priority issues.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, what you said is exactly correct. The joint partner statement I've drafted has been changed since the last time we discussed it in staff meeting. I've narrowed it down to supporting initiatives of our key partners, City of Wichita and Regional Chamber of Commerce, and restricted it to basically the behavioral health, Joint Behavioral Health Initiative, Comprehensive State Transportation Program, including North Junction, and workforce development initiatives that's been proposed by the chamber. I think the previous statement was a little looser, and could have bled into some other issues that the commission may not have supported. This was brought up by Commissioner Howell, and I think was a very good point, so. Ask that you adopt the joint partner statement.
Very good. Well, again, this is a joint statement with some key individuals that we're going to be working with, trying to get issues worked through the legislature this year, and each one of them are common issues across major organizations in this area. We didn't want to get to the point where we say, hey, we agree with everything everybody else does, because there's a problem with that, because we don't agree with everything that everybody else wants to put in their legislative agenda. But these three issues, I think we've boiled down to the fact that we can support them, so I make a motion that we approve the joint partner statement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Papoon, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, moving on, what I've entitled issues of importance, these are issues that are likely only going to be used by staff and our contract lobbyist, Jason Watkins, but what do we include? We could call them other issues or just issues, but these are other issues that have been raised by staff and commissioners. Go through the first three of these issues, we may want to look at addressing those initially. These were the issues that were brought before us by our corrections folks, Linda Martins in particular, and deal with various funding requests for corrections, and ask that you adopt these three issues as other issues of importance.
Very good. And again, we've all been briefed on these first three issues, they are important, so I move that we approve items one, two, and three as issues of importance.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. All right, Mr. Papoon, continue.
Mr. Chairman, the next three issues, I'm just going by the slides, the issue, the fourth issue has to do with supporting, strengthening of domestic violence legislation. In particular, Senator Faust Gudoe has a bill that she's going to introduce, is being proposed, that would strengthen that in some fashion, so we tried to leave it fairly, in general, to support tightening domestic violence legislation, as long as it doesn't create some unfunded mandate. In particular, we're looking out for the city of Wichita. The fifth issue has to do with expanding some rights under the Kansas Open Records Act to detention officers, and the sixth has to do with the issue we've discussed, and it's been discussed in the community and been brought forward in the newspaper about the number of citizens who have had their licenses suspended, and ask that you adopt or vote on these three issues of importance.
Very good, thank you. I agree with items four and five. I've heard numbers up to seventy-five thousand people on item six. I understand our district attorney is working item six. I don't have good information on it that I can base a decision on, so I think we need to discuss it separately to see if we wanted to keep it or not, so I may move that we approve four and five at this time.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk-
Commissioner Howell.
I'm sorry, did you want to discuss four and five?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment that I thought we had planned on doing all nine of these together. If we're going to do these individually, that's fine, we can talk about them individually, but I would have been supportive of the nine as a pack, but if we're going to talk about these individually, we're going to have some discussion. That's fine, if that's what you want to do, that's fine. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. We have, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Could I make a substitute motion that we approve all of them, all nine?
You can.
That's my second, that's my substitute motion.
We have a substitute motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? I will be voting against it, but beyond that.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
All right, we have a motion and a second, no discussion. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
No. Hey. Thank you all, we have a legislative platform. Thank you. Yeah, that was a long process.
We made sausage. Successful sausage.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, I think we're at item foxtrot.
Item F, approve an addition to the Human Resources Staffing Table.
Mr. Manager?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Before Sheena takes the podium, I just want to give you a lay of the land of what this staffing table recommendation is all about. When we hired Sheena a little bit over a year ago, we discussed strategically the role of HR, and we wanted to migrate from a more siloed HR department to a more generalist model with HR professionals. We wanted to become more proactive in ways to assist employees through employment, compensation, employee relations, and benefits. Another organizational decision we made shortly after the first of the year was to make Sheena the HR Division Director and to make her a core part of the leadership team. That was a little bit different than how we'd handled it in the past. So she has management responsibilities over in this side of the building, she's here a lot regarding budget, she's here a lot regarding policy institution, and she's a critical part of our leadership team. About that same time, shortly thereafter, during the BOCC retreat in February, the commission made it crystal clear to me and to the leadership team that you wanted to take care of our employees, and taking care of our employees encompasses a lot. It's compensation, it's morale, it's training, it's development, it's the environment we put them into work, and I don't have to tell you how critical Human Resources is to that function organizationally. So what Sheena's throwing out today is an addition to the staffing table, I'll let her talk about the technicalities of that, but I wanted to give you the backdrop of all of the discussion that went into this before we reached this day. But with that, I'll turn it over to Sheena.
Good afternoon, Sheena.
Good afternoon. I'll have to change my wording, I was going to say good morning, but good afternoon. Today, I'm here to request an additional position on our staffing table in the Division of Human Resources for a Deputy Chief Human Resources Officer. The position will be pivotal on projects of significance within the division, and ultimately provide support for many of the key areas of the strategic plan that was adopted last week. This position will assist in the strategic development of core HR components such as compensation, employment, workforce, and training, again, key drivers in our strategic plan. In addition to becoming a beneficial resource for the organization, the position will be a business partner for other departments to assist in the delivery of projects, organizational development, and daily issues within the division in guarding investigations and personnel matters. By having this staff member, our division will be able to better provide an employee experience that is focused on policies and direction. The Deputy CHRO will have a significant authority and responsibility for matters in the Division of Human Resources. We have many things to accomplish to move forward in the organization, and put a reemphasis on the role of HR and the importance of putting employees first, so I can, up for your consideration, an addition to our staffing table.
Very good. Any questions for Sheena? I don't see any questions, Sheena. You've briefed each and every one of us on this individually, we think it's a great idea, so move to approve.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you, Sheena.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item G, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on December 12, 2019.
Afternoon, Joe.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts, we discuss and now recommend three items for your approval. Our first item is Public Safety Uniforms and Web-Based Ordering System for various departments. This is to accept, the recommendation is to accept the proposal from Galls LLC, and this is based on the Byboard Cooperative Purchasing Contract, which is 587-19, and to establish contract rates which will be good through May 31, 2022. Our second item is the On-Call Elevator Maintenance for Facilities Maintenance, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Otis Elevator Company, and that's in the amount of seventy-three thousand eight hundred dollars annually, and establish contract rates for three years with two one-year options to renew. And our final item is Medical Waste Pickup and Disposal for various departments, and this recommendation is to accept the bid from Kansas Medical Waste Service LLC and establish contract rates for two years with three one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of the items.
Very good. I don't see any questions. I have one. Does this mean our elevators are going to start working in this courthouse?
We hope so.
With that, then, I think it's a great idea. I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
The stairs work still?
The stairs do work, but people up on 11th complained. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good afternoon again, Chairman. Tom Stoles, County Manager, recommend approval of consent items H through Y.
Move to approve Hotel Through Yankee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
We have anything else, Mr. Papoon?
I think we can move along.
We beat you up enough for one day? Well, good. All right, next item, please.
Other.
Do any Commissioners have anything to come before other today? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to commend KPTS Channel Eight once again. They are doing amazing things over there. Victor Hogstrom called me yesterday and was excited to let me know that the KPTS Channel Eight here in Wichita is now being broadcast on YouTube Live, other words, a streaming channel. So if you don't have access to Cox Cable or Uverse or whatever, and for whatever reason you're not getting good reception, you can get YouTube Live. There's a number of people in the Derby area, this is going to be very important to, Derby's a very big user of YouTube, not YouTube Live, YouTube TV, excuse me, I apologize, YouTube TVs. There's a lot of people in Derby that use YouTube TV, and I just was able to check it on my phone, it's broadcasting right now, no problem, and all of their programs are available, you can record them and view those whenever. It's a wonderful addition to our services with the KPTS for them to have their programming included in our meetings on YouTube TV. So I want to say thank you to Victor Hogstrom and all the staff at KPTS, thank you.
Good. I got a question for you then, Commissioner Howell. Does that mean if after one o'clock we're still here, they'll keep broadcasting on YouTube Live?
I don't believe that, again, this is YouTube TV, so I don't believe that's true. Our YouTube Live, Cedric County Channel can broadcast as long as our meetings go, that's a different issue entirely, but YouTube TV basically follows what you see on television that's broadcasting over the air. It's the same broadcast feed, except for it just goes through a different channel, so it's YouTube TV, and that is wonderful. I would anticipate that it would end at one o'clock, just as the broadcast does.
Okay. So even though they're not over the air, they can't keep us on this YouTube TV?
I don't believe that's part of the deal. I think that they're just putting their broadcast into a different pipeline, so.
Okay, sounds good. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to say, since this is our last meeting of the year, how appreciative I am of the staff, of our interns, and of my fellow Commissioners. I really have learned a lot this year. I didn't quite know what I was getting myself into, but I really appreciate the robust conversations that we have, and even though we don't always agree, like today, we got somewhere. So I appreciate you guys being patient with me and getting me through this first year, because it has been quite the doozy. So I wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, or Happy Hanukkah, or whatever you celebrate. I just want to say that I think it's, we've gotten a lot accomplished, we're moving things forward, and I hope that we're inspiring people to get involved in county government. It is very exciting, right, everybody? You're so excited? I'll quit, because I know we have a lot going on, and it's almost one o'clock, well, 12:30. So thank you guys so much, that's really what I wanted to say.
Very good. Well, thank you, Commissioner Cruz, and as I said at the beginning of the meeting, I truly want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, but I also recognize, because we have comm care under our organization, that the holidays can be stressing times for some of the individuals in our community, and I want to make sure that they understand that we have organizations available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, if anyone is having any problems or crisis during the holidays. Our staff is there for them, and I understand how stressful it can be on some folks at this time of year when everyone else is celebrating and you may have some personal problems of your own. So I want to thank our comm care for staying open and taking care of our citizens. Also, if you're looking for a Christmas gift, if you recall, I, the Kansas Firefighters Association, is selling calendars. I still have a few of those calendars available myself, but you can still purchase them online. So they're great stocking stuffers, or if you want to have a white elephant gift that you take to someone, I make sure that you support them, they're twenty-five dollars, and it's a great way to support our firefighters. So I don't see anything else to come before other. At this time, I'd like to recess the Cedric County Board of County Commissioners meeting At this time, I'd like to recess the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners meeting for December 18th. Call together, call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One for December 18th, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Present.
Chairman Dennis?
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Does anyone wish to speak on the public agenda? All I have is staff in the audience, so I doubt if any of them want to speak. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of October 9, 2019.
Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to view the minutes of October 9, 2019. Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in the second and any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Tom Stoles again, recommend approval of Consent Item B on Fire Agenda.
Move to approve Bravo?
Second.
We have a motion in the second and any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. And does any Commissioner have anything else that needs to come before the Fire District today? Seeing nothing, I'm going to adjourn the Fire District Number One and call back to order the Board of County Commissioners for December 18th. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive Session.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess an executive session for 20 minutes, returning at 12:50?
52, maybe.
12:52 approximately.
12:51.
It'll be 12:52.
12:52. 12:52 military time. For the consultation with the Attorney for the County regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss contract negotiations.
Thank you, Commissioner. I second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. We'll go down, you want to go over here? Little conference room back by our place.
The best way to fight mosquito bites is to follow the three Ds, drain, dress, and deet. Make sure you use insect repellents that contain deet. Other options include picardin, lemon eucalyptus oil, and IR 3535. But make sure you follow the product label directions and avoid overapplication.
The best way to fight mosquito bite is to follow the three Ds, drain, dress, and deet. Drain any standing water around your home since mosquito needs water to breed. Check anything that can hold water, including pots, gutter, tires, pet dishes, and bird The best way to fight mosquito bite is to follow the three Ds, drain, dress, and deet. Dress in long sleeves and pants when outside, especially at dawn and dusk hours, which is when mosquitoes are most active. You can also treat your clothing with permethrin for added protection. Do not use permethrin directly on the skin.
The best way to fight mosquito bites is to follow the three Ds, drain, dress, and deet. You can also fight mosquitoes with a fourth D, dunks. Mosquito dunks kill mosquito larvae and standing water, but they are safe for humans, animals, and other insects. One dunk can last up to 30 days, and you can treat 100 square feet.
Hello, I'm County Commissioner Michael O'Donnell, here with Hayesville Mayor Bruce Armstrong, and we want to make an exciting announcement about the intersection where we are at 55th and Meridian. The county has partnered with the Hayesville School District and will be making major changes to this intersection, including a full traffic signal. Many people have asked me since I was elected to bring some changes to this intersection, including the traffic lights. The other changes that we're going to be making is we're going to be widening the turn lanes in front of campus, both on 55th Street and on Meridian. This will improve safety for the students at campus, for the employees of campus, and for all the residents of Sedgwick County and Hayesville that use this intersection.
I think if you can see behind us right now, where the school is letting out, and you've got 1,500-plus students just here at campus itself, the traffic stacks up, there are true real safety problems. Twice a day when kids are coming in and leaving, it is a real safety problem. Accidents have happened. I think that we want to thank the county for stepping in to take care of this safety problem, and the school for stepping up and actually helping with it also. So we're looking forward to the project being done.
Just want to reiterate the commitment that the county and the city and the school district have, that public safety is our top priority, and also making sure we have infrastructure that fits the needs of the 21st century. Four-way stop has served Hayesville, South Wichita, Sedgwick County well for many decades, but it is time to adapt. These additional turn signals and turn lanes is going to be a big, major improvement. So once again, we just appreciate the partnership that the City of Hayesville and USD 261 has with the county, because we couldn't get it done if it wasn't a partnership between all three entities. We will have information on our website, my personal Facebook page, I'm sure the City of Hayesville will have it all on theirs as well, so that you can share this information
Each year, nearly 22,000 people end up in the emergency room due to injuries involving barbecue grills, fire pits, and outdoor fires. Here are some safety tips to keep you and your family safe this summer. Your grill should be placed a minimum 10 feet away from all combustible materials. Always make sure your gas grill lid is open before lighting it. Keep your grill clean by removing grease and fat buildup. Never leave your grill unattended. Keep children and pets from the barbecue grilling area. Get away from fire pits or chimeneas and never leave them unattended. If you smell gas or propane, turn off your grill and call 911. Never move the grill after it has been lit. If you're using a charcoal-style grill or smoker, always use the proper charcoal lighter fluid.
One whopper for the copper!
Never operate your fire pit or chimenea beneath a building or overhang. Keep fire pits or chimeneas a minimum of 15 feet away from any and all combustible material, including your home and other structures. Position your fire pit or chimenea on a firm, level surface. Always extinguish fire pits, barbecue grills, and chimeneas when you are finished using them. Always keep a fire extinguisher close by and educate yourself on how to use it. Use the PASS method. Pull the pin, aim the nozzle at the base of the fire, squeeze the handle, and sweep side to side. For more safety tips, you can visit our website at www.sedgwickcounty.org.
Hi, everyone. My name is Emily with Sedgwick County Strategic Communications, and this is Cody Sharbit with Emergency Management. Today, we're here to learn more about outdoor warning sirens and how they sound and operate. So Cody, tell me, how many outdoor warning sirens are located within Wichita and Sedgwick County?
Well, we have 150 sirens on our system. As you might imagine, most of those are in the city of Wichita, but every small city in the county has at least one. There are also quite a few in the unincorporated areas of Sedgwick County, and there are actually even some outside of our county lines. We operate a few down in the city of Mulvane and at the Kansas Star Casino.
Okay. What's the biggest complaint you hear about outdoor warning sirens?
Well, I have to say that the complaint we get most often is people saying, "I can't hear the sirens inside." Well, I'm sorry to tell you, folks, but you're not supposed to. They're not designed to be heard inside, especially with today's better-constructed, better-insulated homes with the windows closed, the air conditioner on, the TV, all those sources of noise. You may not ever hear that siren inside, and even if you do hear it, it may not be loud enough to get your attention and distract you from what you're doing, to let you know that there's a warning that's been issued. So there are people out there who want them to be their primary means of receiving that information. In other words, they want the siren to sound, they're going to wait for that siren to sound before they take any action, and you just can't do that. You need to use what we call a layered approach.
So can you explain to me what a layered approach is?
Sure. It means having multiple ways of receiving that critical information, so that if one fails, you've got a backup. Maybe your primary is the TV, and all the local TV weather people do a great job at it, but if the electricity is out, so is the TV. And what if the storm comes in the middle of the night? As good as your local weatherman is, he's not coming to your house at 3:00 a.m. to turn on the TV for you. So you've got to have something to do that, something that's battery-powered, something that's going to wake you up in the middle of the night, and one of the best things that we've found for that is the NOAA All Hazards Weather Radio. It has sirens, it will be battery-powered, it will wake you up if that's what you need. A lot of folks rely on cell phones, and those are good. They give a lot of information, a lot of apps. They also receive wireless emergency alerts, but if you've lost your cellphone signal, if the battery dies on your cellphone, those are out of the pictures as well. So a layered approach means having multiple ways to get that critical information, including something that's going to wake you up at night, but you can't rely on that to be the sirens. That's not their purpose.
Okay. Can you tell me what the purpose of outdoor warning sirens are?
Sure. Just that. They are an outdoor warning device. They were put in place to warn people who are outside, away from TV, away from radio, maybe even away from their phone, that something bad is happening, they need to get inside, turn on local media, and find out what.
When do you guys sound the warning sirens?
Well, we test them every Monday at noon, unless it's a holiday or the skies are threatening, cloudy, that type of thing. Other than that, there's only two reasons that those sirens will ever sound. One is an attack on the homeland, such as an air raid, and that will be indicated by the classic rise-and-fall tone in the siren. For the other reason, one thing, a tornado warning for Sedgwick County. For some portion of our county, that's going to be the same steady tone that they hear Monday at the test.
What about an all-clear?
Now, that would be too confusing, we feel. So if we want the sirens to mean one thing only, so if you're in your shelter and you hear that siren go off, you're thinking, "Well, is that the all-clear that I'm hearing, or is that a new warning that's been issued and I need to stay in shelter?" So it's one thing and one thing only, take cover now.
So how does the system operate?
Well, the National Weather Service, when they issue a warning now, they issue the warning polygon. It shows where the storm is now and where it might go downstream and who might be in the path of it. The coordinates for that come from one place, the Weather Service. They give them to the TV station. So if you're flipping channels, that box will be on the same radar map at the exact same location on all three channels. They also share it with us in Emergency Management, and it comes to our siren computer. So that allows us to do selective sounding. In the past, if any portion of the county was under a warning, we had to sound every siren in the county. But now, with selective sounding, all the other sirens in or immediately adjacent to that warned area are going to sound. That helps us eliminate overwarning and something called siren complacency. So let's say the storm is near Mount Hope or Andale, and it's moving off to the northeast, towards Harvey County. Why would you ever sound the sirens in Clearwater or Hayesville or Derby, for example? If you do that, then the sirens go off, nothing happens, nothing is going to happen because the storm is nowhere near, people start getting complacent. They start tuning out the sirens. So if that siren closest to you is not sounding, it probably means the threat is not anywhere close to you. But if you do hear that closest siren going off, the threat is real, the threat is close, it's time to take action now.
So what's the most important thing for people to remember?
Well, there's actually several things I want folks to take away from this. First of all, the sirens are not meant to be heard inside at all, and especially not meant to wake you up at night. Another thing is, there's only one reason to hear that steady tone. Unless it's Monday at noon, it means tornado warning. Take shelter now. And also, with selective sounding, no more reason for complacency. If that closest siren is going off, the threat is real, the threat is close, and it's time to take action.
Cody, thank you so much for taking time to talk to us about outdoor warning sirens. We hope everyone watching has learned something new. For more information, you can visit our website at www.sedgwickcounty.org.
Every 12 minutes, someone in the U.S. dies from suicide. It's the 10th leading cause of death in America, killing more than 44,000 people each year. Truth is, most people thinking about suicide don't actually want to die, but need help staying alive.
When I felt suicidal, I came to the Community Crisis Center.
A 24-hour resource center for mental health assistance and suicide prevention.
Where I spoke with a therapist and discussed my feelings.
By providing face-to-face interaction.
It was determined I'd be admitted to the Crisis Observation Unit.
For crisis treatment planning.
To work with a case manager to come up with a plan to ensure my safety.
Clinical staff are ready to help.
They are always friendly and supportive.
Going above and beyond.
To help me if I begin having increased urges to hurt myself.
With the encouragement and support from the Community Crisis Center.
I am currently 323 days self-arm-free.
Educating yourself and others on the warning signs can play a crucial role in saving someone else's life. If you or someone you know is contemplating suicide, take it seriously and get help. Call the Community Crisis Center today at 316-660-7500.
Welcome to the new tag office located at 5620 East Kellogg Drive in Wichita. This space will be a lot larger. We will have a total of 25 clerks working in this location. We will be able to provide better efficiencies to better serve our customers. In this location, they'll be able to do any ADA transactions, registration renewals, and title work. So you will not be able to get your driver's license here. But the other addition is the Kansas Highway Patrol is not going to be located in this The three satellites that we are consolidating are the Brittany Center at 21st and Woodlawn, the other one in Wichita is located at 21st and Mays Road, behind Delance at Chadsworth Shopping Center, and then our third one is in Derby, located at 212 Greenway. We felt that as a managerial decision, it would be better to combine those three offices into one larger office after we've seen such great success at the 2525 West Douglas Tag Office. It's going to reduce some staff time, it's going to reduce stress time, it's going to improve morale, and it's just going to be better for the citizens overall. I know all the small towns would love to have their own tag office. So what we're working on right now is the possibility of getting a kiosk solution. Johnson County has got them in their tag offices, but I don't know if theirs is the solution that I'm looking for for Sedgwick County. I've been working with Kansas Department of Revenue on some different options, but it'd be very limited to where we could put those kiosks. So that's why we're going to do a request for proposals, see what other options are out there to get us the best fit at the best price for our county. You can renew by mail or via the ICANN app. Customers are welcome to go to the office at 2525 West Douglas. I also highly recommend not waiting until the last day of the month to come. That's when we seem to always be the busiest. We always have been, we always will be. One of the best things that we've ever implemented in Sedgwick County is the online virtual waiting system, Qless. You can go up to the county website, and you can get on via any kind of electronic device. You can get your virtual spot in line, and we'll send you text messages on how long your wait times are, and it's been very, very, very helpful. The satellite offices at Brittany, Chadsworth, and Derby will close at end of business on Friday, December 7, and then the new Kellogg Tag Office will open at noon on Monday, December This new location will be more convenient for our customers and staff. I am happy that we are finally we are finally able to complete this project.
I want to welcome everyone to this very important event that's involving our EMS. Our EMS is something that I am very proud of in Sedgwick County, and have fought hard to make sure that we keep it the premier organization that it is, and it's one of only a handful across the United States that is fully accredited. Post 8 was originally, came into service in 1991, and it's been an active post ever since that period of time. However, if you'd have seen it just not too many months ago, this was kind of a disaster, actually. When I first walked through it, it needed an awful lot of work.
Several years ago, the plan was to tear this place down, buy some land somewhere else, and build a new one for $1.9 million. We kind of asked some questions about that and said, "Let's think about doing something else." We ended up with this, a remodel for a little over $400,000. That's still not cheap.
During executive session, that no binding action was taken. Does any commissioner have anything else that needs to come before the commission today? Seeing nothing, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission meetings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS, 320 West 21st Street North, Wichita, Kansas, 67203.
We now join our regularly scheduled program already in progress.
Makes everything we do possible, the shows you love, as well as the services this station provides to our community. If you ever want to change the amount or stop, just contact us. As a sustainer, you have the personal satisfaction of knowing you are a valuable, vital, and ongoing member of our public television family. Thank you.
We have this amazing collection of seven DVDs. I'm so excited about this, David, because I was reading through all of the different sketches that are so much fun, and some of the guest stars that I never would have thought would do a comedy show, and they did it.
Well, that's true. Like, for instance, Joanne Woodward is in here, who would associate that?
Comedy?
And of course, the dowager, the countess herself, Maggie Smith from Downton Abbey made her American television debut on The Carol Burnett Show.
You're so putter there, partner, and I'm so... How'd you do? You're so pogo. You're so Popeye and peanuts and limes, so Winnie the Pooh.
I mean, who knew? It's just incredible. Imagine what a skit they could have done with Downton Abbey.
Oh, my gosh. I can only imagine what Carol Burnett would have done with that. How much fun. But everybody loved Carol Burnett. Everybody wanted to be on the show with her.
Yeah, a major, major talent, I'll tell you. And so, on this, it's over 20 hours of comedy sketches, musical numbers, and of course, the "Let's bump up the lights", the Q&amp;A, which I always loved. I always hated when that part ended and it was time for the show. That was just magic.
Yeah, and this is our way of sharing with you great television, because, you know, this is the great thing about public television. We're not just creating the great television that you're watching right now, but all of these things that you can experience outside, too. You can take this and share it with your friends, your neighbors. You can watch it anytime. That is what public television is all about.
So, don't go away. We'll be right back.
For your annual gift of $120, or as a sustainer at the $10 monthly level, we will thank you with the DVD of the program we're enjoying, Carol Burnett: A Celebration. Become a sustainer at the $20 level, or make an annual gift of $240, and relive Carol's favorites with a seven DVD set. This set contains complete shows, bonus material, and commentary from the stars of The Carol Burnett Show. With this package, available only to public television members, savor everything. Carol's audience Q&amp;As.
Did you ever work the Catskill Mountains?
Yes, I did. As a performer.
For guest stars. The musical numbers. And Bob Mackie's amazing costumes. And of course, the sketches we tuned in for every week.
I don't want nobody. I mean, the nobody going into that door unless they got the badge on. Now, that's so simple that a child can understand that. You got that?
I got the headache. My head's going to dark, to dark, to dark.
I think he understands me.
Aqui, huh?
Ah, speak Spanish.
You, you vixen, you. Stop it. I love you. That gown is gorgeous.
Thank you. I saw it in the window, and I just couldn't resist it.
Over 20 hours of great fun and memories. Show your support of this public television station and Carol Burnett with your generous gift.
Thank you.
Do you remember watching The Carol Burnett Show? Did you gather around the television with your family, waiting to see this week's guest star?